All right, I'd like to call this Tampa City Council Evening Meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Carlson, Hertek, Clendenin, Henderson, Vera, Miranda, Minuscalco.
Here.
We have a physical call.
Councilman Vera, you're muted. Do we need a motion to allow him to be virtual?
Okay, there, there.
Oh, there you go.
May I have a motion to allow him to be virtual? Motion from Councilmember Clendenin, and Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Yes, Kate Wells is also virtual this evening. All right. Roll call votes, okay. May I have a motion to open all the public hearings? We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenin, and Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Yes, sir, do you want to do some housekeeping?
Yes, Sam Thomas Development Coordination, good evening, Council. We do have a few housekeeping items. Firstly, applicant for VAC 2503, that's Agenda Item Number Two, and REZ 2505, Agenda Item Number Eight, has requested that these items be heard together and then voted on separately. So we would either need to move Item Two down on the agenda, or bring Item Eight up on the agenda.
All right, so we'll do Two, followed by Eight with separate votes.
And then, next, we have REZ 2411, that is Item Number...
Ten.
Item Number Ten, that is a misnotice and cannot be heard, please remove it from the agenda.
All right, can I get a motion to remove Item Ten? Motion from Councilmember Miranda to remove Ten, secondly, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Anything else?
And then, lastly, we have VAC 2419, Agenda Item Number One, and then Agenda Item Number Six, which is REZ 2503. The applicant has requested a continuance to the June 12th public hearing date, and to waive the 180-day requirement for REZ 2503. The applicant originally requested May 8th, but I've confirmed with them that June 12th will be okay.
All right, so we have a motion to... Mr. Shelby, yes, do we need to take public comment on that?
If there's anybody who has, wants to speak to the continuance, please.
All right, so we have a motion to continue to Item One and Six to June 12th, you said?
Yes.
Okay, at 5:01 PM. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on the continuance only for One or Six?
On the road, Chairman.
Oh, that's going to be for 5:01 PM, 3:15 East Kennedy Boulevard, Third Floor Tampa Florida, 3 through 602, which is this room.
And just a reminder, Council and the public, that there will be no other notice for that continuance. If you are interested in that, do please make a note of that date and time.
All right, June 12th, 5:01 PM, right here in this room, we've already listed the address. We have a motion and a second roll call vote for the continuance for One and Six.
Waive the 180-day rule as well.
And the waiver of the 180 days?
Yes, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Carlson, Hertek.
Yes.
Clendenin.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Minuscalco.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, since Two goes with Eight, and Eight is already a quasi-judicial, if you're going to speak on any of the public hearings tonight, please stand, raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. Thank you very much, Item Number Two.
I'll have to ask the clerk to share the Elmo screen, please.
All right, just place your item there, and we'll load it up. Thanks. All right, it's up on the big screen. Go ahead and say your name, sir.
Ross Sammons, Development Coordination, presenting File Number VAC 25-03. The applicant is RMC Tampa Commons LLC and Sherwood Properties LLC. Representative's name is Gardner Brewer Hudson. Property address is 201 North Dale Mayberry Highway. This is a proposed vacating request to vacate a portion of North Marie Avenue located north of Kennedy Boulevard, south of North B Street, east of Dale Mayberry Highway, and west of Sterling Avenue.
All right, just a second, Ken, T and I, can you put the overhead projection image larger and shrink Councilman Vera's screen, so we can see it better on our screen? There you go. Go ahead, sir, sorry about that.
No, you're good. This application was filed in the City of Tampa, November 21st, 2024. The applicant's reasoning for the vacating is the southern portion of North Marie Avenue has been previously vacated. The remainder of North Marie Avenue right-of-way will be included as part of redevelopment with future cross-access easement. All abutting property owners are applicants on this request. This right-of-way was created by subdivision plat and acquisition. The existing right-of-way is approximately 13,075 square feet. This is within the West Shore overlay. Here's an aerial view of the applicant's property in red, the second applicant here, and the vacating request in yellow of North Marie Avenue. This is the plat which North Marie Avenue is created, previously called Fairview Avenue. This is image looking north on Marie Avenue. And this is the image looking south Marie Avenue. Staff has no objection to this vacating request. Easement reservations are required by Transportation, Wastewater, Water, TECO, Frontier, and Spectrum. Special conditions include natural resources. They must comply with Chapter 27 as regard to tree preservation and site design for improvements placed adjacent to trees in vacated area. Also, no later than 12 months after the effective date of the ordinance, as defined in Section 12 below, owners shall submit a release of easement application to Director of the City Development and Growth Management Department requesting a release of a temporary water easement reserved, and they must execute and record a release of easement agreement, which shall include a bill of sale. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
concludes my presentation.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, we have an applicant for Item Number Two. Come on up. State your name.
Truett Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. And Chairman, we're happy, whatever your pleasure is, if you'd like, we can do both of, separate. That's fine as well. So we'll handle the vacating first, and then the rezoning. These two are tied together. We were going to put them all together in one 15-minute presentation, but this is absolutely fine. So staff did a great job of covering what this is, and maybe I, in the, for the sake of time, I'll go ahead and introduce the entire team. And so with me tonight, the local ownership group, Mitchell Rice, who is appearing virtually, and Sam Linsky, and then the developers, La Cessi Development, they're an experienced multifamily developer with projects throughout the Southeastern United States. And here from La Cessi is John Flynn, Matt Gorley, and James MacArthur. Todd Pressman will be presenting, and then Scott Gilner with Kinley Horn, Ricky Pederica with Dark Moss, and Eric Ryder with Baker Barrios.
Okay, T and I, on our screen, we see the closed captioning. Is there any way to either shrink the closed captioning or remove it, because it blocks some of the images?
Can you see that?
They're reworking it.
Okay, got it.
All right, there we go. Thanks. All right, they're going to bring it back up.
No problem.
Okay, so I see an overview here regarding the vacating. Can you see it?
Everybody's got it?
We got it here.
Okay, good. So on the left, which I think is also your left, in blue is an outline of this property in question. Tampa Commons was originally going to be one development that spanned, and again, just to orient you, Kennedy on the south, Dale Mayberry on the west, that's North B on the north, and then North Sterling on the east. And so Tampa Commons was originally contemplated to be that full block from North B all the way south to Kennedy. Things happened in the economy, obviously, the 13-story building and parking garage got developed on the south end, and then subsequently, the Barnes and Noble and Office Depot came in later. This rezoning is going to be really subject of the Office Depot site, but as it relates to the vacating, everything, and I'll use, I guess I can't use my pointer, but everything has been vacated absent the small stub that runs from North B, and you can kind of follow the asphalt down to where it deadens. And so what we're doing is just vacating that portion, which you can more clearly see on, on the right. As Ross mentioned, transportation easements will be granted back, sidewalks will be put in place, no buildings will be on that portion, we're not utilizing any of the density gained from that. Basically, we're just curing a right-of-way that happened, I don't know why they didn't, when they vacated originally, didn't vacate that portion. But that's what that is. And then, secondly, there's a little bit of complexity to this, which I'll go ahead and get into now, which is on this slide, you can see the small green triangle. That was actually owned by RMC as the current owner, their predecessor in title. They deeded that property to the city, I assume for maneuverability of getting into the Office Depot. So at our next hearing, should we be lucky enough to proceed, there will be a purchase agreement where RMC will basically be buying back land that they gave to the city, and pretty unique what we're going to do with those funds, which I'll get into in a second, but just wanted to give you the complete picture of the vacating, which is the portion highlighted in yellow, and then also that green triangle, which is not subject to the vacating, but subject to the separate purchase agreement. So happy to answer any questions you have on that portion of the application, and should you not ready to proceed with, with the rezoning.
Yes, ma'am, Councilman Hertek.
So that section is now known as North Marie Avenue?
Correct.
Okay, and so even with the rezoning, or I'm sorry, even with the vacating, that will still act as a driveway?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the back way to Aldi. Just going to throw that out there.
Back way to Aldi, and, and, and maybe as important, the Village Inn, too.
Yes, there you go. So very important, just wanted to throw that out there. People will still be able to get to their grocery store.
Hundred percent, and Village Inn will actually gain ownership of the western portion of that, but again, it'll function better than it does today. So you'll have better access to the Village Inn and the Aldi.
And then Free Pie Wednesday with any purchase.
There you go.
Anybody else? All right, is there anything further to your presentation before I go to public comment? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? The only person that I have registered is Mitchell Rice, but he's part of your application, so.
Correct.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on Item Number Two? This is just the vacating. We have motion, motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin, and Councilmember Hertek, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Miranda, would you like to read Item Number Two?
Thank you, Chairman, I'll read, I have a number two. File number VAC 25-03. Orders being presented, first reading present, presentation for first reading consideration. An ordinance in the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Maria Street right-of-way located north of Kennedy Boulevard, south of North B, east of Dale Mayberry Highway, and west of Sterling Avenue within the Plata Almera subdivision in the City of Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more fully described in Section Two thereof, certain to, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particular set forth, providing for enforcement and penalties for violation, providing for definitions and limitations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with the secondly, Councilmember Vera. All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hertek.
Yes.
Clendenin.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Minuscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 6, 2025, at 10:00 AM at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, Third Floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Thank you very much. All right, Item Number Eight.
All right, Sam Thomas Development Coordination, Agenda Item Number Eight is REZ 2505, a request to rezone 201 North Dale Mayberry Highway, from plan development to plan development for storefront residential, commercial, and office, office business professional, retail sales shoppers goods, restaurant, and personal services. I'll turn it over to Emily with the Planning Commission now.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Can we switch them?
Yeah, they're going to activate the overhead now. There you go.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. The site's located within the West Shore Planning District, the West Shore Business District, and the Oakford Park Neighborhood. It's also located within evacuation zone C. As described earlier with the other application, again, the site is here for reference, and commercial uses are along Dale Mayberry, and single-family detached is to the north and east of the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map of the subject site. It's located here, represented with the RMU, the Regional Mixed Use 100 designation, which does go further north along Dale Mayberry, and further south along West Kennedy is the UMU 60 designation, and R10 is to the north and east of the subject site with that single-family detached just pointed out earlier. The request to rezone to plan development to allow multifamily residential and restaurant can be considered within the RMU 100, and it's proposing an FAR of 1.27, which is 30% 36% of the allowable development potential. Per land use policy, 6.1.13, RMU 100 designation is within a mixed-use corridor, and any development of the site should address the mixed-use corridor centers and corridors policies provided in the comprehensive plan. The proposed PD is furthering many comprehensive plan policies related to housing for Tampa's growing population, intensification along mixed-use corridors, pedestrian interconnectivity, and density to support transit services. The comprehensive plan also speaks to design and sensitive development for higher density along corridors that are located to adjacent residential. The applicant has submitted a note for the site data table to be added between first and second readings, committing to a step-down approach on the eastern portion of the site adjacent to North Sterling Avenue. The step-down in height, which transitions to a 15-foot setback for floors four and above, will provide sensitivity to the adjacent single-family detached uses. Additionally, the PD proposes walk-up units with front doors facing the sidewalk along the eastern and northern perimeter of the site, consistent with policy direction in the comprehensive plan. The proposed PD also adds sidewalks around the perimeter of Building C, providing front doors and walk-up units for residents and pedestrians. However, internal connections from Building C to B and Building A to B are missing. To ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan, Planning Commission staff recommends that enhanced pedestrian access between Buildings A, B, and C are added between first and second reading. Overall, the proposed PD is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed PD is providing housing near employment and transit services, consistent with the compact city form strategy, and has proposed scale en massing sensitive to the surrounding development. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination, I do have a revised revision sheet before we get started. The applicant has a copy of this as well. We'll start out with an aerial map of the subject site. You can see the subject site outlined in red here on West, North Dale Mayberry Highway, West North B Street, the vacated Marie Avenue, and then North Sterling Avenue. As Emily mentioned, you have commercial uses along Dale Mayberry Highway and Kennedy Boulevard with a mix of CI or CG zoning, a few CI zoning districts, and then some PDs and office professional zoning districts as well. As you move off these commercial corridors, it transitions pretty quickly into RS50 zoning for residential single-family detached homes. So we'll move into the site plan here that was provided by the applicant. So the applicant is proposing one new structure that will be Building C, that's where the Office Depot is currently located. This building will be storefront residential uses, and then the existing structures A, B, and D will be retained. These are currently used for retail sales shoppers goods, restaurant, and personal services. The new proposed Building C will contain 335,705 square feet with approximately 320 residential units and 1,200 square feet of commercial or office space. This number is slightly different by about 40,000 square feet than what is on the site plan and what is listed in the site data table, which was 2,940,000-ish square feet. The applicant reached out and informed us that there was a typo on their site plan, so that's something that's going to be corrected between first and second reading. The proposed office space and leasing office is located here, and then the applicant is proposing walk-up units along the vacated North Marie Avenue, West North B Street, and then North Sterling Avenue. Access to the parking garage for this structure is located here from North Sterling Avenue, from this drive aisle, and then from south of the vacated Marie Avenue, right here as well. The proposed maximum building height is 100 feet. The elevations depict the residential and office commercial portion of the structure as seven stories, and then the parking garage south of that is depicted as nine stories with an amenity level on the ninth floor of the parking garage. Between first and second reading, as Emily mentioned, the applicant is proposing a step-back on this eastern side along North Sterling Avenue. That step-back will apply for the residential portion of the building, but not the parking structure that's to the south of that. So from floors up to floor three, the setback is going to be 10 feet, and then, once you get above floor three, up to the top floor, the step-back is going to go to a 15-foot setback. Let's see here. The parking requirements for Building C is 324 parking spaces, and 425 parking spaces are being provided. You also have bicycle parking provided here, here, and here. There is a five-foot, five-to-six-foot sidewalk that runs along North B Street, North Sterling Avenue, and the vacated Marie Avenue. You can kind of see that the sidewalk kind of ends here and ends here. The applicant has agreed between first and second reading to make that sidewalk connection go all the way around the building. And then, when you're looking at the subject site overall, vehicular access is provided from North Dale Mayberry Highway, the vacated Marie, all West North B Street, and then Sterling Avenue here, and Sterling Avenue all the way down here to the south. There is surface parking that exists for these existing structures on-site for A, B, and then there is, let's see here, I think, two parking spots here for D, and then you have some additional surface parking located to the south, this little jut that goes along North Sterling Avenue. The building heights that are, for the buildings that are going to be retained, range from 22 to 24.4 feet in height. There's an existing five-foot sidewalk along North Dale Mayberry Highway, and then, as Emily was mentioning, the applicant has agreed between first and second reading to add some additional pedestrian connections from Building C to Building B, yeah, Building B, Building A, and then some additional pedestrian connections from Dale Mayberry Highway to these buildings, so that there'll be better pedestrian circibility and navigability through the site. Overall, the proposed development is 367,690 square feet of residential and non-residential uses at a 1.43 FAR. As mentioned earlier, there was that typo on the site plan, so these numbers are different than what is on the site plan and in the site, in the staff report, due to that square-footage difference in Building C, and that will be changed between first and second reading. So I will run through some pictures now, or I'll run through the elevations and pictures. So here are the elevations provided by the applicant. So this is the east elevation along Sterling Avenue. This is where you're going to see during the second reading, if this is approved, where they will revise these elevations to start that step-back in height along Sterling Avenue for this portion of the building. This is going to be looking, let's see here, west, so this is along the vacated Marie Avenue, and then you have the north elevation along West North B Street, and then you have the south elevation along that internal drive aisle that is to the south of the subject site. We'll move into some pictures now. The site is quite large, so kind of a lot of pictures to go through, so bear with me. to go through, so bear with me. You get tired of looking at the pictures, please let me know. So this is that southern part of the site where you have the parking that runs along Sterling Avenue. Sterling Avenue would be here. This is the parking garage for that PD in the office building to the south of the subject site. This is looking south of the subject site, so this is that last entrance off Sterling Avenue, and then this is where the other PD for the parking garage and the office building that currently exists. You have Kennedy Boulevard here in the distance, and then there's a better view. Subject site starts here. This is that existing office building and parking garage. We're now looking east from the subject site across North Sterling Avenue. You have Kennedy Boulevard and the commercial uses there, and this is some vacant residential land. Looking north along Sterling Avenue, you can see that parking, and then the median in the middle of Sterling Avenue, and that's looking back south again towards Kennedy Boulevard along Sterling. Moving farther up, so this will be the entrance off Sterling Avenue. This is the Office Depot where the new proposed building C will be located at. And then this is looking at that drive aisle from Sterling Avenue that goes into the subject site. So this is the approximate location of the new building C and about where that parking garage will be for that structure. This is looking across the street at the residential, single-family homes on the other side of Sterling Avenue. Moving farther north along the site towards West Northeast Street. Subject site is right here. Now we're looking west from Sterling and the median at where that new building C will be located at. Getting closer to West Northeast Street now. Looking into the subject site, this is where the existing parking for the Office Depot is. So this is where building C will be located. This is looking northeast at the intersection of West Northeast and North Sterling Avenue at some of the single-family homes, and this is looking north directly at the intersection. We're now moving back towards Dale Mayberry Highway on West Northeast Street. This is where the new subject, the subject site, where the new building will be located. Looking down into the site now, moving closer to Marie Avenue. And here is the intersection of West Northeast and Marie Avenue on the north side. So back south here is where the portion of Marie Avenue was just vacated. And there is that portion of Marie Avenue that I was just talking about. The new building will be located here. You can see the back of the Audi here, and then the Village Pancake House access will be located right there. You can see that access better in this picture. This is looking east back towards Sterling where the Office Depot will be demolished. Moving further into the site going south. This is a look from where the new building will be proposed at the back of Audi. And we moved a little bit farther. You can see the surface parking that will be retained. This is looking south. This is the building D that will be retained. That'll be kind of almost next to, if not underneath, the parking garage. And there's a better view of the building that will be retained. The Office Depot will be demolished, and that's where building C will be located. This is the existing restaurants on site that will be retained. We're looking south now. Looking back west from those restaurants at the front of Audi. Now looking east towards the front of Audi from Dale Mayberry Highway. Looking south along Dale Mayberry Highway. Looking west across Dale Mayberry Highway from the subject site. Looking back north at that existing access into the site from North Dale Mayberry. This has moved farther south towards Kennedy Boulevard, looking west across North Dale Mayberry Highway. We've moved back to the southern section of the site, looking at the restaurants existing. Looking south again. Moving back behind that existing restaurant in the southern perimeter of the PD. Looking back towards where the new construction will be, and then building D that will be retained. And then we've made a full circle back around to the site to that access that will be provided from North Sterling Avenue.
I think he broke the record for pictures.
I know. Hey, I walked that whole side and was sweating by the time I was done. All righty. So here is the site plan again. So Development Review and Compliance Staff have found the request to be inconsistent due to the findings from transportation related to access to, the commercial access to a local street. Should it be the pleasure of council to approve the application, and waivers, modifications to the site plan as shown on the revision sheet must be completed between first and second reading. These revisions will not resolve the inconsistent finding. Available for any questions.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Applicant?
Good evening again. Truitt Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. Thrilled to be here in front of you tonight. This has been a long time coming. We actually filed this back in 2023, whiffed through it, filed it again, and it's really been an effort of collaboration, and I wanted to specifically thank the Oakford Park Neighborhood Association. Marcus Moats is here to speak tonight. Also, your zoning staff, I think we wore poor Sam out just walking around taking pictures, planning commission staff, and then, I guess importantly, our client too for having the patience and sticking with us. And Todd Pressman is going to cover the highlights of the rezoning, but I did think it was important to cover two things that are actually outside of the purview of the rezoning that I've discussed with your legal department, and just wanted to mention for the record. One, if you recall during the vacating, I touched on that little green triangular piece that will be the subject of the purchase agreement. Interesting situation where the land was given by my client, and now they're in the kind of strange situation of having to buy the land that they gave back from the city. And so what we're going to do with that purchase price is those funds will be devoted to the Etch Averia Park, just to the north for park improvements, and so that will be a part of that purchase agreement, which has been negotiated both with the Neighborhood Association as well as the City Attorney's Office. So one thought that was important to put on the record. And then secondly, outside the purview of the rezoning, we have agreed to some off-site improvements, which we've handled through a letter agreement with Oakford Park Neighborhood Association, just to kind of run through those in two seconds. It's a four-way stop that will be installed at North B and Sterling. Crosswalks that'll go across North B and then across Sterling. There's an interesting median that's in the middle that has a sidewalk that runs to the park. So those are there. And then along Sterling, since we are across from single-family homes, wanted to do the best we could to mitigate any impacts there. And so improvements also on the median that runs along Sterling from Kennedy to North B with enhanced landscaping, some safer kind of channelization into the property, and then ongoing maintenance and irrigation installed in that. So we've got a letter agreement that's gone to the association, but I just wanted to state that on the record, and then we've got that letter agreement that if Marty will take it, we'll submit for the record too. And then lastly, before I hand things over to Todd, our clients worked hard on getting some letters of support, and we were provided those this afternoon. These are from owners of property in and around the, in and around the vicinity, and so wanted to put those into the record. And now I'll turn things over to Todd.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Chairman Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. Is that PowerPoint up for you there?
There you go.
There you go. This is REZ 25-05. Do want to thank the staff for their hard work. As Truitt said, this has been a long time coming, but our marching orders from day one have been for transparency, primary emphasis to solve issues and concerns that arose during the first rendition, which you did not see, and that's been very successful. So just to give you an overview, it's been a 36%, 36% reduction in the number of floors, 20% reduction in the number of units. We are exceeding required tree retention agreed space, and importantly, we're in flood zone X. So looking at the PowerPoint, we are in central Tampa as shown to you by staff. 320 multifamily units, 1,200 square feet of office. Slides are not moving. Okay, there you go. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. Located at Dale Mayberry and Kennedy. This is a property deplarated hazard, as you're aware, and again, we are in flood zone X. The location, we have village in there, which everyone knows, particularly all the political folks, is the use that is right next door. In front is a seventh-floor parking garage and the one building, which is 13 floors. Those are both just off the property, but are very high and very intensive, and this is the rear of the site. Now, council members, critically important is the future land use category is RMU 100. That is the highest category in the city, and the council has been moving forward and seeking to add density and height along that Kennedy corridor. So we feel that we're in a spot that this project certainly belongs. The issue really before you is residential units noted as C in the rear, shown here on the proposed site plan. As you've heard, it includes walk-up units, six-foot sidewalks, step-down building height, internal courtyards, and internal service area, and accessing. We have support from all the different county departments, including Planning Commission, free reviewing agencies. Now, as Truitt indicated, the history of this was back in May of '23 where a first rendition came through. It did not make it to council because issues came up, so I give credit to these developers because they went back to square one, they went back to the drawing board, and changed this project pretty substantially. Originally, back then, it came back, it came in 11 floors and 400 units. What's proposed now is seven floors, 320 units. So we superimposed what's proposed in the red compared to the old plan, and that is a 37% reduction of floors, 80 units reduced. And this is comparable to the one building I showed you out front and the existing parking garage that is just off the property on Kennedy. And this is what we consider to be a beautiful elevation of what's proposed. And again, a comparable, the old plan, 11-story 400 units versus the new plan, 7 billion of 320 units, which was over a year and a half of work, which we are glad to be able to come to real success before you. Now, there is an approved streetscape that I want to show you. This is looking at Sterling down towards Kennedy, and the focus in on this area, which the Planning Commission very strongly suggested and directed to work with, which came out to be a great asset to the project, and that is the first through floors, first through floors as indicated, will have a beautiful building add to the streetscape and setbacks for the building in regard to that. And you can see in the North Sterling in the right there, the walk-up units 10-foot and then five-foot after the third floor. Now, very importantly, commissioners or council members, there are seven waivers, but critically, five of them are pass-throughs or carryovers from the originally approved zoning. So there's two others. One is regarding 50% transparency at the ground level, which typically is for retail, commercial, for display windows, but these are going to be individual residential units, and privacy is called for, so we're asking for a waiver to that in terms of the ground level of building C for the walk-up residential units. And Ricky Pederica will speak about the last one. He'll come up after myself and speak about the environmental and greenscapes. If I may turn it over to Ricky, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Come on up. Please state your name.
Thank you, Councilor Ricky Pederica, 308 East 7th Avenue with Dark Moss. I have been sworn. I will first speak to the grand tree in question. I will stay out. On West Northeast, there's a 54-inch live oak that we originally rated C9 due to a hazard over West Northeast. We've revised that rating to a C6 historically. It was in good health with fair structure and fair form. We are requesting removal because if we maintain the 20 feet, which is where the building's currently set, we'd be removing too much canopy because it trends south. In order to not remove excess canopy, the required setback would be 36 feet from the tree. We purveyed two reasonable reconfiguration options. One added a floor to the proper, to the subject site, and one impacted the existing building to the south by shifting south and reducing parking by 104 spaces. Green space is slightly more complicated due to the mixed-use nature of the site, but the main takeaway is that we've, all green space has been provided, and even with estimations for hardscape areas within the courtyards, there's green space to spare in the future development. We've been able to increase setbacks from the original design on Sterling and North B, and in all these facades accommodate type 1 shade trees, which align with the shade tree discussion in prior cases and with the West Shore overlay. Turn it back over.
That is all that we have, but happy to stand for any questions. And again, just wanted to thank everybody for working with us and on this project.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, come on up one, one at a time. I know you were both sworn in. Please state your name. Yes, sir.
My name is Mitchell Stansel. I live at 216 North Clearview Avenue, which is one block east of Sterling. I'm not opposed to the development, but I am kind of opposed to the encroachment of the development into our neighborhood. Currently, where all structures are, there's got to be at least a 50-foot setback. You saw all the photos. The parking garage, which is, you know, the highest structure closest to my neighborhood, is pushed further south, so it does encroach in the neighborhood from like North A by maybe three lots. But where they're going to be building now, looking out my backyard and my back window, I'll be seeing a high-rise. But all that being, I did want to bring up a couple of things. Besides the setback, our neighborhood is basically landlocked from access. The only way you can leave anywhere from Heims, Kennedy, or Dale Mayberry is by taking a right-hand turn or going to Gray Street. So if you're putting 320 apartments and those people need to go to Heims, they're going to go down North B and turn onto Heims, or down North A, which is already happening with the office complex, and with Aldi going in there, it's adding more traffic. So I would, you know, hope that there would be some consideration with that. They're proposing walk-up units. I walk myself. I walk over to North Hyde Park where there's tons of apartment development, which are built basically based off of their guidelines within 10 feet of the sidewalk, and there's parking. There's no parking on Sterling, but if you have an apartment that you can walk to, you'll be parking on Sterling. Sterling's a wider street, but it's going to, you know, I watch people going to that office complex. They turn off of Dale Mayberry to Gray and then take Gray down to Sterling to get there. I mean, I understand the traffic flow. So, you know, consider the fact that access is very limited. The neighborhood has a high volume of traffic, not related to it, but there have been multiple water main breaks on Heims. When that happens, traffic is diverted through my neighborhood. So those are the things I would like to consider.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, come on up. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Come on and state your name.
Microphone, you guys got me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Marcus Moats, 309 North Clearview Avenue. I'm on the board of the Oakford Park Neighborhood Association. Did want to just state that the developers certainly worked with our neighborhood, and we, the majority of us do feel that we've been heard. If we didn't feel heard, there'd be a lot more of us here tonight than the two of us, and so I certainly appreciate that, and then the revisions that have been made are appreciated. No development's perfect, that's to say the least, but this one has certainly evolved in a way that we're appreciative of. And I do know that the off-site improvements and the park improvements that were mentioned are key to this for the neighborhood, and so I just wanted to restate that, and we appreciate the developers put that in writing because the traffic considerations that my, my neighborhood, my fellow neighborhood member raised are real, and I think that some of those have been addressed via the off-site improvements that have been mentioned previously. And we're thankful for, for this, and we look forward to seeing what's going to happen next. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Wait, I have a question, Mr. Gardner, I guess. So the gentleman had mentioned the walk-up units on Sterling?
Yes.
And I know that, and he mentioned going to North Hyde Park. On Rome Avenue, there are walk-up units there, but on Rome, you can, there's, there's an area for the resident to park right in front of the unit and walk up. Being that Sterling is not as wide as a road, is there going to be any parking, or it's just the walk-up units and they have to find their own parking in the parking garage?
No, we do not have on streets, so all that parking will be self-contained in the, in the garage.
in the garage.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? We had a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin. Do you need any rebuttal, sir?
I don't think so. Again, just really wanted to thank Marcus and his group for working with us. There's been, it's been a constant flow, and I think we've really gotten to a great place, and certainly understand the other gentleman and his concerns. I think the fact of this one is you just got R M U one hundred, as Todd mentioned, outside of the C B D is the, the most intense, but I do feel like residential will be a, a much better fit for that neighborhood than high-impact commercial, which would this, would be completely slated for and understandable.
Because there, you know, when, when Heims was redone, just north of Kennedy, you can only take a right-hand turn to go south on Heims coming out of that neighborhood. And that, you know, over the years, I've heard complaints about, you know, you can't drive across Heims because the median is now blocked. Access points are people taking Gray Street to Dale Mayberry, or North A, North B. Again, it's only going to take you to Heims to take a right, and then you have Kennedy traffic, which is very, very, very busy. So, you know, I can understand the concerns of, when they say landlocked, because of transportation improvements over the years, it's changed the traffic flow for that neighborhood, and that, you know, with so many units, I know it's a, it's a big concern. So we had a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenin. Yes, ma'am?
I just had a couple of questions. When, when talking about Sterling, and you have the median in between Sterling, are, do those have curbs?
The medians? Yes, they do. And one of the things that I mentioned, I don't think we've got a great aerial, but to help with that traffic, we're going to reshape those medians to allow for channelization and some stacking in, which should help that northbound flow on Sterling continue and not be jammed up by people trying to turn left, turn left mid-block into the site.
My, my interest lies mainly in the gentleman's concern about on-street parking, and, which, which I can absolutely see how that could happen. So if there is a curb on both sides of, say, I mean, this is the southbound lane that we're talking about, is it, it is, is it wide enough for someone to park and someone to be able to go by?
It, it is not, and I think that's the beauty of those wide medians, is that the right-of-way isn't all that expansive, and so then you have the medians who really only have traffic lanes north and south, and the inability to on-street park, I think is your question?
Yeah. So how, how wide is that street there, though? Because I can't, you can't use that.
It's one lane south and one lane north.
Those are pretty narrow roads. I don't know exactly how wide, but I don't know if you can, say you could have somebody park right there. It's, I doubt if you can fit it, yeah.
Wait, 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 you have to come up, you have to come up, sir. State, state your name again for the record.
Mitchell Stancil, two one six North Clearview. There are residents that live on the east side of Sterling. There is a median. The median supports high-voltage power lines. The park has high-voltage power lines going through it, but there are people that have parked their cars in front of their house, and traffic still flows down.
Okay.
And it, and the, the, the road is the same width on either side of that median.
So.
Thank you, sir.
So, so then my question would be, if, if, if there is room, is there a way that we could build in parking if there is room for it already? If, if we could simply designate the parking instead of just allowing it on the street? So, so what I'm saying is, I, I don't have anything, I can't really, so, so if the street is wide enough, if we could simply put some lines on the, I mean, i- if right now you could just park there, is there a way we could actually physically put designated spaces? Say that you could cram ten cars in there, but really comfortably and safely, there should only be eight cars parked on that street with some bulb-outs at, say, Kennedy and North A, or North B, rather, so that people can't, or I guess it would be North A and North B, so people can't park all the way to the corner? Am I making any sense?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may respond to that question, this is Kate Wells in the legal department, and thank you again for allowing me to participate remotely. The discussion about the off-site improvements and parking on the street, that is, I would suggest, counsel, that that is not related to this rezoning. Any improvements that are done in the right-of-way will be done by a separate right-of-way permit and analyzed by that staff. When, when the applicant came to us initially about wanting to add some conditions to the site plan or do a separate development agreement to address these off-site improvements, it was determined that because these were improvements that were discussed between the applicant and the neighborhood and not requested by the city, that they are best addressed separately, which I believe Truitt addressed at the beginning of his presentation, and they will then be permitted separately through right-of-way. So the discussion about, the, the detailed discussion that we're now getting into concerns me a bit because it would be separate and apart from the rezoning that is before you.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe just to help, and I'll, I'll stick to, to facts and not go outside of the rezoning, as Ms. Wells mentioned, but we, there are five hundred and eighty parking spaces required. We're providing six fifteen, so hopefully that will help in not putting pressure on those streets. And then your staff was great handing me information. It appears that from the eastern curb of the property line on Sterling to that curved median is just over sixteen feet, so it's already tight, so hard for two cars to, to get by. So not, not arguing that somebody hasn't done it, but it's not something that's conducive to on-street parking.
Okay, since there's nothing I can say about that, I would, I don't know, that's something that I think the neighborhood would need to bring up between first and second reading, but I also just wanted to say I am very appreciative of folks listening to the conversation about type-one shade trees in, in medians where there are sidewalks, so appreciate that.
All right, we have motion closed. It's from Councilman Clendenin. Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Viera, are, are you comfortable reading item number eight with the revision sheet?
Yes, sir. Have it here. I move in ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of two oh one North Dale Mayberry Highway in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification P D plan development, the P D plan development storefront residential, commercial office, office, professional retail sales, shoppers' goods, restaurant, and personal services, providing an effective date with the aforementioned revision sheet.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Viera, second Councilmember Clendenin, roll call vote.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Clendenin?
I, I would want to, just want to state something for the record on this, that this is a, this is a great project. My only disappointment is it isn't more intense, because if not here, then where? This is in a transportation corridor, this is where we should be building intensity and density, and this is a, a, a critical part of, as we develop the city of Tampa. And, and I know there's people that were in close proximity of these, these locations. They're going to, there is going to be impact on these neighborhoods. If you live within a, a city block of our, one of our major transportation corridors in, in the future, your neighbors are going to be impacted by this density, so I'd probably vote yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Maniscalfo?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March sixth, twenty twenty-five, at ten a.m. at Old City Hall, located at three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. All right, item number three.
Good evening, Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Agenda item number three is R A Z twenty-four forty-seven, request to rezon twenty-ten East Palhatten Avenue from Seminole Heights Residential Single Family to Seminole Heights Residential Multi-Family. I'll turn it over to the planning commission.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. The subject site is located within the central Tampa Planning District, Seminole Heights Urban Village and the old Seminole Heights neighborhood. It's also an evacuation zone E. The surrounding area is a single, primarily single-family detached, and as you go further, these are two technical schools, and also you have public, semi-public uses here. This is the adopted future land use map. As you can see, the subject site is here, represented with the residential ten designation, which does surround the subject site in the immediate area, and further to the west is residential twenty, which there are several pockets of it, and moving further south along East Hillsborough Avenue is where the community commercial thirty-five zoning, future land use designation is, where those heavier commercial uses are. Planning Commission staff has determined that the request is compatible with the surrounding area. The existing density of the portion of East Palhatten Avenue between North Twentieth Street and North Twenty-second Street is three point five five dwelling units per acre, based on seventeen sample sites excluding the subject site, or approximately thirty-five percent of the density anticipated under the residential ten designation. This request will provide additional infill development on an underutilized site consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan encourages attached single-family uses to be designed with front doors oriented towards neighborhood sidewalks or streets. When designing the site, the front entrances to the proposed units should be oriented towards East Palhatten Avenue, consistent with policy direction and any applicable Seminole Heights overlay standards, which furthers the greater Seminole Heights vision. The proposed request supports comprehensive plan policies related to housing the city's population, as the comprehensive plan encourages new housing on vacant and underutilized land to ensure an adequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs of Tampa's present and future populations. The request will also provide additional housing choices within walking distance of transit, consistent with the comprehensive plan. The request is comparable and compatible with the surrounding area, and will provide additional housing in the Seminole Heights Urban Village, consistent with the development pattern and the residential ten future land use designation. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Nope, thank you very much. Come on up.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. We'll start with an aerial view of the subject site and the surrounding area. You can see the subject site outlined here in red on East Palhatten. The site is located south of East Henry Avenue, west of North Twenty-second Street, east of North Twentieth Street, and north of East Hillsborough Avenue. The surrounding area's development pattern is characterized by residential single-family detached. Surrounding the site is Seminole Heights Residential Single Family, and here you can see this entire area is Seminole Heights Residential Single Family. Here it changes after Comanche to Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive, and Twenty-second Street right here is where the Seminole Heights Overlay District ends, and you can see there's residential, single-family residential fifty there. This is a survey of the property. You can see the outline of the parcel. The site is located on East Palhatten Avenue, and you can also see the existing home right here, and this is the outline of the property, of the parcel. The subject site is surrounded by residential single-family detached units to the north, south, east, and west. The subject block contains single-family, single-story detached residential units. The subject site is part of the Winifred Park subdivision platted in nineteen forty-six. Apart from the two parcels located west of the subject site, developed in twenty nineteen, and five newly constructed homes developed in twenty twenty-three, all of which are single-family residential detached units, the remainder of the block face consists of homes built mostly in the nineteen fifties. Staff has provided an analysis on page two of the staff report. No residential multifamily exists in the immediate area. Given the site is in the Seminole Heights Special District, the applicant is allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit as well. This was taken into consideration in staff's finding. Since this is a Euclidian resulting, there is no site plan or elevations. I'll show some photos of the site and area, surrounding area. This is a photo of the site. This is another photo of the site. This is looking east from the site, which is here, down Palhatten. This is looking at the adjacent single-family home to the east of the site. This is looking further east down Palhatten. This is looking south across Palhatten. This is looking west of the site, and these are some of those newly constructed homes that I spoke about earlier. And this is at Twentieth and Palhatten, which also shows a few of the newer constructed homes in that area. Development Coordination and Compliance Staff review the application and find the request to be inconsistent with the development pattern and built environment. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Nope, thank you very much. Applicant? We have an applicant registered online. Are they online? All right, if they are, Marta Velazquez, if you could please turn your camera on, unmute yourself, and then we will swear you in.
Yes, well, um.
Is there anybody?
She's having a issue. She's trying to work out.
All right, let's, let's hold this item, and we'll come back to it. She's having some technical difficulties, so we'll skip over to item number four.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Agenda item number four is R A Z twenty-four ninety, request to rezon thirty-nine sixteen West Alva Street from C G to P D for vehicle sales and leasing use. This rezoning was originally scheduled for December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, but was a missed notice. I'll turn it over to the planning commission.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. The subject site is located within the west shore planning district, the west shore business district, and the Drew Park neighborhood. It's also an evacuation zone E. This is an aerial of the subject site, which is located here. The surrounding area is a mix of uses between light and heavy, commercial, industrial, and some residential uses, and there's multifamily here and locate, some residential located here, but it is mostly commercial and industrial uses. This is the future land use map of the subject site. All of the red is community commercial thirty-five, and further to the east is light industrial. Planning Commission staff has, has determined that the proposed P D is comparable and compatible with the surrounding development pattern. The site is within a mixed-use corridor, and therefore, any development of the site should address the applicable policies. The comprehensive plan promotes pedestrian safety and encourages commercial development that enhances the city character and ambiance. In doing so, the comprehensive plan requires new commercial development to connect building entrances to public rights away, and encourages sidewalks in areas where practical and feasible. Additionally, the applicant has provided a bicycle rack, furthering mobility policies within the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission staff has determined that the proposed P D, oh, yeah, is comparable to the surrounding development pattern, and as the proposed structures are a total of two thousand seven hundred and four square feet at a zero point two eight F A R, which is consistent with the intensity anticipated under the C C thirty-five designation, and Planning Commission staff requests, if approved between first and second readings, the F A R of zero point two eight be added to the site plan, the future land use designation of C C thirty-five be listed in the site data table, and the front entrances are labeled. Additionally, the comprehensive plan promotes development that is sensitive to the surrounding area. The P D proposes a two-foot buffer and a six-foot fence to the east, and a four-and-a-half-foot buffer and a six-foot fence to the west. In conclusion, the proposed development is comparable and compatible with the surrounding development pattern and consistent with the development anticipated under the C C thirty-five designation, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Yes, next up.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. We'll start with an aerial view of the subject site. You can see the subject site outlined in red. The subject site currently contains one building, and the site is and the site is located south of West Alva, west of North Church Avenue and North Del Mayberry, north of West Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and east of North Lois Avenue. Beginning at the intersection of North Cortez and West Alva Street, the zoning on the east side of Cortez Avenue is Commercial General and Commercial Intensive. You can see that here. The Commercial Intensive zoning extends to the north, south, east, and west. And then west of North Cortez Avenue, the zoning changes to Industrial General, which is over this way. Considering the surrounding development pattern, the requested use of vehicle sales and leasing provides an appropriate infill. Here's a view of the site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant is proposing one new structure, and the existing building will remain. The existing building is here, and then this is the footprint of the new structure proposed. The existing building is located at the southeast corner of the parcel with surface parking located to the north of the existing building. The applicant proposes to construct a new building west of the existing building. Access to the site is on West Alva, which is provided here. The applicant has provided the building footprint on the plan. Two parking spaces are required and two space, two parking spaces plus one ADA space has been provided. And you can see these here. The maximum proposed building height is 18 feet. There are two new natural resource waivers requested as part of this application. Here are the elevations provided by the applicant. This is the existing building on site. And this is the front elevation, the rear elevation, and the two-side elevations. I'll, I'll give some pictures of the site here. This is a picture of the site, and you can see the existing building there. This is another photo of the site, where you can see the existing building. This is looking from the site, looking west towards Cortez. And you can see the adjacent building there. This is looking west down Alva Street towards Cortez. This is looking down Alva to Cortez, which that is the intersection right here. This is looking north across Alva from the site. This is looking east of the site at that residence. And then this is looking further down Alva. And that's where you can start to see the commercial down this way. Development Coordination and Compliance Staff review the application and find the request to be consistent with the land development code. There are two waivers with this request. If City Council approves the application, the modifications to the site plan, as shown on the submitted revision sheet, must be completed between first and second reading. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Nope. Anybody, is there an applicant for item number four? All right. Come on up, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Rayha Jan, 3916 West Alva Street. Tried to do the simple rezoning, that all the adjacent property are CI. We just wanna, and it's been sitting there for a couple of years. So we decided to go ahead and do the rezoning in order to do something about it, so. And we're gonna, we are trying to do the permitting right now for building the next to the existing building, the metal building. But I don't know how long that would take, but that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Any questions or comments from council? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item four? We have motion closed from Councilmember Clendenon. Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Councilmember Henderson, would you like to read item number four?
Yes, sir, Chair. Thank you. File number, excuse me. File number REZ 2490, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3916 West Alva Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classifications CG Commercial General to PD Plan Development, vehicle sales and leasing providing an effective date.
Second. We have motion from Councilmember Henderson, second Councilmember Clendenon. Let's do a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Miranda, Miranda. Roll call vote.
We're look-alike.
Carlson. Hertek.
Yes.
Clendenon.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Viera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Thank you very much. We'll go back to item number three. Marta Velazquez, if she is on, turn on your camera and unmute yourself. We're gonna swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So they already presented your case. Now it's your time to speak on your item number three. If you would please state your name and go ahead, and you have, it's your time to present.
My name is Marta Velazquez, and my name is Velazquez. I'm not sure if I'm still allowed to speak as well.
Yeah, I mean, go, go ahead. You're part of the, the petition, so. What was your name, ma'am?
It is Velazquez.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I guess we just wanted to share, like, the approach to wanting to create a multifamily rather than two, single-family homes there. You know, we want to take like a conservative economic approach. Instead of demolishing the home and rebuilding two sites, this design like preserves the house's infrastructure and building materials, and most of the rework is within the frame of the home as it exists now. The design also aims to avoid a tree removal by primarily modifying the existing structure and adding very little to the building. Additionally, rather than demoing and creating two separate smaller units, this would kind of maintain the appearance of the house as it is to continue to be consistent with the surrounding homes. Not trying to make any sort of crazy megastructure. Just trying to do something practical. And do something for hair and for me.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Hertek.
Wasn't this a Euclidean zoning? We don't have a site plan for this. So I'm not really sure why, why the applicant is talking about a site plan when that's not what we can debate here.
Yeah, Sam Thomas Development Coordination. I think what the applicant is trying to say is what they intend and what their, what their plans are that they want to do with the site. While you can't base your decision based on that, I think they're trying to add context to the reason behind their request that is before you today.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else to say? No? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number three?
Motion closed.
We have motion closed from Councilmember Clendenon. Second, Miranda, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilmember Clendenon, would you mind reading three?
Uh, no.
I can't read it.
All right. Councilmember Hertek, Councilmember Carlson.
Move file number three, file number REZ 24-47, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2010 East Powhatan Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification SHRS Seminole Heights Residential Single Family to SHRM Seminole Heights Residential Multifamily Providing Effective Date.
We have motion from Councilmember Carlson, second Councilmember Henderson. Roll call vote.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson. Hertek.
No.
Clendenon.
No.
Henderson.
Yes.
Viera. Viera.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carries with Hertek and Clendenon voting no.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries with Hertek and Clendenon voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
All right. Item number five.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number five is REZ 2496, a request to rezone 3212 West Marlin Avenue from RS 60 Residential Single Family 60 to RS 50 Residential Single Family 50. I'll turn it over to Emily with the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. This is in the South Tampa Planning District in the Interbay South of Gandy Neighborhood. It's within the evacuation zone B. The surrounding area is primarily single-family detached residences that surround the subject site. And as you move north off of Gandy is a larger mix of commercial and multifamily uses, and Gandy is a transit emphasis corridor. This is the adopted future land use map. You can see the subject site is represented with the residential 10 designation, which does surround the subject site on all sides. And again, as you move forward to Gandy, where those commercial uses are, is Community Mixed Use 35, and this is CC 35. This portion of West Marlin Avenue between South Sheridan Road and South Sixth Street, excluding the subject site, has a density of 5.89 dwelling units per acre, based on 10 sample sites. Lot widths range from 50 to 76 feet, averaging 57.4 feet. The proposed rezoning will allow consideration of one single-family detached zoning lot with a width of approximately 50 feet, matching the existing lot widths on this portion of West Marlin Avenue. Given the existing block density and range of widths, Planning Commission staff finds that their request will provide for residential development that will be built within the existing street, block, and lot configuration of the neighborhood. Planning Commission staff reviewed the application and found no adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. The comprehensive plan encourages infill development on vacant and underutilized sites to accommodate current and future populations. The request promotes higher density on an underutilized site planned for 10 dwelling units per acre. The proposed RS 50 zoning district would allow for additional housing within the Interbay South of Gandy Neighborhood. In conclusion, the request is comparable and compatible with the surrounding area and is consistent with the development pattern anticipated under the residential 10 future land use designation. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. We'll start with our aerial view of the subject site. You see the subject site outlined in red here on West Marlin Avenue. Surrounding the subject site is residential, single-family detached homes. You can see that there is some RS 60 zoning and then quite a few RS 50 zoning districts that have occurred over the years through rezon, the rezoning process. When you move north, you have Gandy Boulevard right here. You have commercial general uses along Gandy Boulevard, and then you also have some single-family attached uses, and then some multifamily along Sherwood here, and then some additional single-family attached uses along the periphery of this neighborhood. So I'll show the conforming map now. This is Euclidean. There's no site plan, but staff did do an analysis based on this conforming map. The subject site is approximately 0.15 acres or 6,750 square feet. It's got a 50-foot frontage with 135-foot depth. The RS 50 zoning district does require a minimum of 5,000 square feet and 50-foot of frontage. The subject site is part of the Tropical Terrace subdivision, Block 3, Lot 7, and that was platted at 50 feet. The lots on Block 3 were originally platted with frontages ranging from 50 to 60 feet. So now we'll get into the analysis performed by staff in the conforming map. So we'll start out looking at the originally platted block, which is from Sheridan, South Sheridan Road to South Sixth Street, north of West Paul, and south of Marlin. So this right here is your original plat, platted block. And that's what the first part of the analysis is about. So the subject block, Block 3, that was just outlined, contains 23 parcels today, and the widths range from 50 to 79.99 feet. Excluding the subject site, four parcels or 18% of the subject block have widths ranging 60 feet or greater. And 18 parcels or 82% are 59.99 feet or less. So that's covering the subject block here. When we are looking at the street face that goes along Marlin Avenue from Sh, South Sheridan to South Sixth Street, so that's going to be here and here. There's another analysis that we provided. So when you're looking at that street face on the south side, right here, it contains 11 parcels, including the subject site, with widths ranging from 50 to 79.99 feet. Three or 27% of the parcels have a width of 60 foot or greater, and eight or 73% of the parcels have a width of 59.99 or less. Now we'll look at the north side of Marlin Avenue on this street face. It contains nine parcels, and the widths range from 50 to 79, or the width range from 50 to 99.99 feet. Seven or 78% of the parcels have a width of 60 foot or greater, and two or 22% have a width of 59.99 feet or less. Then lastly, we'll look at the overall analysis area for this. And then based on that overall analysis area, 62% of the parcels have a width of 60 foot or greater, and 38% of the parcels have a width of 59.99 feet or less. So I'll show you some pictures of the area now. This is looking east from the subject site. This is looking north. This is looking west on Marlin Avenue. Looking south. And that's looking east on Marlin Avenue. This is looking directly at the subject site. And then this is looking west from the subject site. I'll put the conforming map back up now. Development Review and Compliance Staff found the request inconsistent. While there are a variety, variety of lot sizes within the vicinity of the subject site, staff finds the proposed request inconsistent with the existing development pattern based on that overall study area. Looking at this overall area and that analysis, a parcel of 62% of the parcels having a width of 60 foot or greater. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Yes. Yeah, I'm actually kind of surprised about the inconsistency, inconsistency on this one. It's such a diversely developed area in close proximity to that commercial corridor. I mean, you look at this map, the only thing consistent about this is inconsistency. I mean, I mean, you've got a lot of RS 50 on that block on the, abutting south of it. I mean, even one on that corner that has been developed. It's, I mean, you guys obviously probably struggled with this one, right? This was, you know.
Yes, sir. So that's kind of why, when we laid on the staff report, we wanted to provide you all with that analysis of the block that was originally platted, and then the street face as well, before we provide that overall analysis. Even though the street face and that block, and when you're looking at this like immediate, very close area, it, it, it looks like it would match with the development pattern. Unfortunately, staff does have to make their decision based on this overall conforming map area for the analysis, which shows that 62% of the parcels are 60 foot or greater, so that's why.
But RS, RS 50 is going to be a conforming lot, right?
The, the lot is currently 50-foot wide.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Yeah, and then, as you can see, there has been a slew of rezonings over the years within the, in the area that went to RS 50. It's just, staff does have to make their overall decision on whether inconsistent or inconsistent based on this overall study area and not just the immediate vicinity.
Better this than a PD. Thank you very much. All right. Applicant for item number five. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Eileen Rosario, ARPC Permiting Consulting, 5827 East Columbus Drive, Tampa, Florida. Good evening, City Council Members. My client is, all he really wants to do is to make sure that when he goes to sell this property, it is legally 50 feet wide, and he wants his zoning to be 50, RS 50, so that they match. He wants to just rebuild a new, brand-new, single-family home. That's all he wants. He does not want to add any extra residential homes. He just wants one single house, but he wants the zoning to be what it should be. It was platted at 50 feet, and we want just for the zoning to be 50 RS 50s. That's all he wants.
Any questions for the applicant? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number five?
Motion closed.
We have nobody registered. Motion closed from Councilmember Clendenon. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilmember Clendenon, would you like to read item five?
Absolutely. Move file number REZ 2496, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3212 West Marlin Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classifications RS 60 Residential Single Family to RS 50 Residential Single Family Providing an Effective Date. single-family providing an effective date.
Okay. We have motion from Councilmember Clendenin, and then Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Hertek.
Yes.
Clendenin.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Piera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Meniskalco.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on March sixth, twenty-twenty-five at ten AM at Old City Hall located at three-one-five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-zero-two.
Thank you very much. Item number seven.
Good evening, Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Agenda Item Number Seven is RAZ twenty-five oh-four. Request to rezone twenty-seven-eleven North MacDill Avenue from CG to PD for air-conditioned storage and clinic uses. I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. The subject site is located within the central Tampa Planning District, the West Tampa Urban Village and the McFarland Park Neighborhood. It's also an evacuation zone B. The subject site is located here, and to the north and west are commercial uses, to the east is an industrial use that is operating as an AC storage, and to the south are single-family This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is here, and it's represented with the community commercial thirty-five future land use designation, which is to the northeast and west of the subject site, and to the south where those single-family detached residences are is the residential ten. The request for AC storage and clinic uses can be considered, and if it is approved, Planning Commission staff request that clinic uses be added to the site data table between first and second readings. That, like I said, they can be considered under this, under the consistency matrix in section twenty-seven twenty-one of the Land Development Code. The CC thirty-five future land use designation allows for the consideration of medium intensity, density, horizontal and vertical mixed use and single-use development, including intensive and general commercial service, office, and residential uses. Under this designation, the site could allow up to thirty-five dwelling units per acre or a two-point-oh FAR. The request proposes a one-point-five FAR, and since the site has arterial frontage, a lot size over point-three-five acres, and includes two uses from separate general categories outlined in the Land Development Code, a bonus agreement is not required. The proposed intensity is consistent with what is anticipated within the CC thirty-five designation. The subject site is located within a mixed-use corridor, urban village, and it's along a transit emphasis corridor, which is North MacDill Avenue. The comprehensive plan emphasizes the importance of multimodal safety and encourages commercial and mixed-use development that enhances Tampa's atmosphere and ambiance. However, the proposed PD does not adequately align with these policies. The plan's policies promote pedestrian-oriented design by encouraging buildings to be placed closer to the street with primary entrances oriented to the public realm and parking to the rear where feasible. The current design, which places parking in the dumpster at the front of the site, conflicts with these policies and prevents a signif- and presents a significant safety concern as it requires garbage trucks to reverse over the only pedestrian connection to the building entrance. In conclusion, while the proposed uses can be considered, the current site layout does not fully support the comprehensive plan policy guidance for pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development along mixed-use and transit emphasis corridors. The proposed design is inconsistent with policies that prioritize and enhance street shape and walkability, which are essential to maintaining the vision of the McFarland Neighborhood. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. I do have a revised revision sheet for you. It is front and back. We'll start with an aerial view of the subject site and the surrounding area. You can see the subject site outlined in red. Along the east side of North MacDill Avenue, north of the intersection of West Saint John Street and North MacDill, which is right here. The existing uses surrounding the site are a mixture of commercial general, commercial intensive, and residential. There are two PDs at the northeast corner on West Columbus Drive, which file number RAZ nineteen-seventy rezoned in two thousand and nineteen for commercial use and bank, and file number RAZ twelve oh-two rezoned in two thousand and twelve for commercial general with commercial general uses. And those are located right here. This is Columbus, and this is North MacDill. Commercial general is prominent along West Columbus and this portion of North MacDill Avenue. Residential uses is prominent once you move south on MacDill Avenue. Considering the surrounding development pattern, the requested use of commercial general provides an appropriate infill. So the, you can see the commercial use is prominent right here on MacDill and then this area in Columbus, and then the residential starts right here just south of the parcel. Here's a view of the site plan, and this is just a zoomed-in view to see it a little bit better. I can put up the entire site plan if needed. This is a site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant is proposing to construct one building on site. This is the gray, dark gray area here. The proposed building would contain a ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-square-foot air-conditioned storage use as well as a one-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six-square-foot clinic. The proposed building will have a maximum height of forty-nine feet. Access to the site will be from North MacDill Avenue and is two-way. The access is here. This is MacDill, North MacDill, right here. There will be surface parking along the west and south portions of the site. Walkways connect the front doors and the parking to the proposed six-foot concrete sidewalk along North MacDill. So this is that proposed clinic use, and then the doors here, there is a office which is included in the air-conditioned storage. Their doors are here, and then this is the connection on the full site plan. I can show you if you'd like. The, it connects to the sidewalk, which runs along North MacDill. This is the entrance to the air-conditioned storage area. The proposed medical clinic is shown on the northwest side of the building and a proposed office for the storage facility on the southwest side. There is an additional entrance to the storage units located on the south side of the building. Forty-nine parking spaces are required and eleven spaces are being provided. There is a seventy-one-foot buffer to the rear here. You can see that. And that's on the east side, and existing trees are being preserved. The proposed building is also being placed to the north of the site to allow for an increased buffer to the existing residential single-family homes. So the building is placed here, and then those residential single-family homes are located here. There are two new waivers requested as part of this application to reduce the required parking from forty-nine spaces to eleven spaces, and to reduce the required number of loading bursts from four to two. And I can show you the entire site plan here so that you can see the sidewalk on MacDill and where it's located, and then this is the buffer here.
You said it was, the loading burst reduced from four to two?
But there are four there.
Yeah.
There are four there. They're, they're requesting the waiver. They actually, when the applicant comes up, they have some changes that they're making, so they'll show what the changes will be. And there'll also be probably additional changes to that. Here are the elevations provided by the applicant. This is the west side of the building, which faces North MacDill. Here you can see the entrances. This is going to be the south side of the building, and then this is the entrance to the air-conditioned storage area. This is the east side, and then this is the north side, and you can see this area here that is along North MacDill. I'll show you some photos of the site. This is north of the site. This is from the site looking north at the adjacent medical use. This is looking north down North MacDill, and you can see the commercial uses along MacDill in this area. This is looking west across MacDill. And then this is also looking across MacDill. The other photo of the church is right here. And this was looking in the opposite way down MacDill. This is the site right here. This is looking at the single-family residential homes down Saint John. This is a photo of the site. And in the rear here, you can see the commercial behind the site as well. Another photo of the site. And lastly, another photo of the site, and these are the residential adjacent homes there. Development Coordination and Compliance Staff reviewed the application and find the request to be inconsistent with the Land Development Code. There are two waivers as part of this request. Notwithstanding staff's finding of inconsistency, if city council approves the application, the modifications to the site plan as shown on the submitted revision sheet must be completed between first and second reading. These revisions will not resolve the issue of transportation's inconsistent finding. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Applicant? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Mills with Mills Short and Associates. I'm the engineer record for the project. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, just, I may need a second here to pull it up. I apologize.
If you're going to speak on this item or the next item, and you have not been sworn in, please stand, raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
It's showing up there.
Thank you very much.
This thing may not be. I've never seen anybody use this type of thing, that's the problem. Maybe just a.
I have some pronouns I can.
Yeah, maybe just a.
Speak to it.
Okay.
If you have a paper copy, you can put it on the.
Oh, okay. I'm going to flip through some of the slides that have already been presented and.
Okay.
We know the location.
All right, they're going to activate the overhead. There we go. So if you want to begin, please, please state your name again.
Okay. So I'm Wesley Mills with Mills Short and Associates. I'm the engineer record for the project. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present our project. Also, want to, want to thank Stephanie and her team. Our, our firm works throughout the state with numerous municipalities, and we found the development team at the city to, to be excellent to work with and very helpful. So really enjoyed working with them to this point. So I have a PowerPoint or a slide here that shows the existing conditions of the site. The aerial that, that we chose is several years old, but it shows the existing building that was, that was on-site before recently being demolished. And I, I think that that's important for a couple of reasons. One, to just see the shape of the site and some of the challenges that, that relate to, to developing the site. And we really worked on our site plan to, priority number one is to not impact the residents to the south, as well as preserving all the existing trees and vegetation on the site. So our site plan mimics, is very similar to the existing site prior to being demolished. You'll see with the existing site, there were two driveway cuts on North MacDill. Our proposed project will eliminate the northern one and maintain the southern access as, as dual access for, for the site. Again, this is our proposed site plan. It shows all of the existing trees that we preserved. The city's requirement for, for preservation is fifty percent. We met at seventy-two percent for the site. Also, in, in staff's report, they also indicate that the minimum open space requirements our project is five times greater than the minimum that, that's required. We really tried to condense the footprint of this site, one, to stay away from the residents, and also to preserve the existing trees, and, and stay clear of any protection zones of, of the existing trees. So we, we do have the one entrance, and we worked to achieve compliance with the comp plan and, and the goals of the city to have the front entrances along MacDill and, and a pedestrian access from, from the public sidewalk along, along MacDill. A couple of clarifications I'd like to make with the site plan is that there, there was a mention of one of our waivers for the loading bursts only being two. Our plan has four loading spaces, which is compliant, so we wouldn't be looking for a waiver, but I believe the misunderstanding there is that city staff would like to see one of those loading spaces that's in front of the main entrance of the storage facility relocated, and then also one of the parking spaces that is adjacent to the dumpster pad to also be relocated, and we're in agreement with that. Our revised site plan would move around the loading spaces slightly and then the parking, so we would not be seeking that waiver. The other thing I, I want to note, when we talk about a dumpster pad location and, and being in conflict with, with certain features of the site, we will not have an exterior dumpster with this project. We will have a trash bin that's located within the facility that will actually be locked so that only cardboard boxes and paper and items like that could be, be thrown away. And then once a week, it will be wheeled, so the dumpster or the trash receptacle will be stored inside the building here, and then it will be brought out the side entrance and then pulled over to the dumpster pad location. So this won't be a physical dumpster enclosure like you're used to seeing with more high-intensity commercial uses. Also, a couple of things I want to make note of is we're required to have a zero landscape buffer on the east side of the site and also on the north side of the site. We have a seventy-foot buffer on the east side and a ten-foot buffer on the north side. On the south side, we're required to have a fifteen-foot buffer, and we have a twenty-foot buffer with, with landscaping, and we have an existing concrete block wall that separates our site from the residential. This is a colorized version of our landscape plan, just to delineate all of the open space that we have with the site in green. The areas that are shaded blue and purple are all the existing trees that we're maintaining and. and we're also maintaining those critical root zones that are requested. As well as, you'll see some of the landscaping features along the southern boundary, which will be... Which will be an enhancement of the existing site. It will be understory trees and hedges and some blooming-type trees, but not tall canopy trees because we're located within an easement, and the city didn't want to see any larger rooted trees in those easements. So, the next slide just superimposes our site and gives you a further view from the site, showing how our site plan works within the corridor of the existing developments. And as you can see, we've tried to push the building as close to North MacDill as possible. It is closer to MacDill than all of the commercial residents around it. And I think it was referenced, there was a PD in 2019 that's at the corner of Columbus, and that also, that approval has parking in the front of the building. And having parking in the front of the building, if the entrances are at the front, and we heard that that was a sensitive point to be compatible with the city's comp plan is to make sure that the building entrances were along the front. We have a medical clinic, and we have the main office to the storage facility at the front of the site. And there are ADA and Florida building requirements, especially with a clinic that requires the handicap and parking spaces to be at the closest point possible to the front doors. So, most of our parking is along the side and not at the front of the building. We do have parking spaces in front of the building, and we really felt to not be, to not be in compliance with ADA and Florida building code, that it was critical to have those parking spaces there. So, we tried to push the building as close to North MacDill as we could. And you'll see similar developments follow a similar path. I wanted to provide a brief outline of the entitlement schedule because we really worked back and forth with staff, and they were very supportive. We had two pre-application meetings to just understand what their vision was for the site and how we could be compliant with the comp plan vision for the city. So, in addition to those two pre-application meetings, we had our DRC review. And then, we also held a neighborhood workshop prior to this meeting because we really wanted to meet with the residents, understand their concerns with our development, and then also give them some additional detail of what we plan to do with the project. Most of the residents were very supportive of the project. They felt like this facility will be approximately $15 million, and they felt very excited for the fact that somebody would come into the neighborhood and put this kind of investment into this property. And they were pleased with how we've situated the building on the site and buffered away from the residents and gave them privacy. And they also were happy to hear about the fact that it's kind of a relatively low-intensity commercial use instead of something more intrusive on the residents. There were one or two, three neighbors that just don't want to see anything happen there. So, I don't want to paint this pretty picture to you guys that everybody was happy. There were a few residents that just don't want to see anything happen with the site. So, this material you have in your staff's report, really what I'm outlining is all the consistencies that this project does have with the comprehensive plan and the town's, or the city's ordinances. So, we're, obviously, we're compatible with the future land use. We're compatible with floor area ratios. We're compatible with natural resources, and in fact, that we have five times as much green space area than was required. We far exceed the city's tree retention requirement. We exceed the landscape buffer requirements. We meet solid waste requirements, storm water, historic preservation, wastewater, Tampa fire rescue, water, and right-of-way. I will skip over my next slide. It's just highlighting what you already have in your staff report that shows all the areas of the comp plan that were consistently. Next, I'd like to talk about the PD waivers. Really, the only PD waiver that we're seeking is the parking. And this is pretty common for these type of facilities. What I did is I looked at the city's parking requirement and compared that to the International Parking Manual, the ITE is its reference, that gets updated on a pretty regular basis. It's a widely-accepted standard for parking rates. And what we tend to find is that, and no knock on the city, I meant most municipalities' parking codes just don't get updated as regularly as the ITE, and they're somewhat antiquated. So, yes, if you were to look at the city parking code, we would be required to have 38 spaces for the self-storage facility. But if you look at the ITE manual, we would be required to have 10.2. I also looked at the medical clinic, and per the ITE, you almost require half the parking spaces than what the city code provides. So, as a comparative, yes, the city's code technically requires 48 spaces. Our project has 16. But if you look at the ITE rate, we are in compliance with a national publication that's widely accepted.
I'm going to hop into the last three minutes for the record. My name is Marty Black. I'm actually credentialed city manager and credentialed AICP city planner. And just wanted to highlight a couple of items for you. In the planning commission staff report, it indicates that there may be some inconsistency issues because of the placement of the parking at the front of the building. I want to just emphasize that if we could put all the parking at the back, we'd have to take down all the trees that were required to preserve under the city's regulations. So, moving the parking to the back of the building actually acts contrary to that and is actually, would create an inconsistency with the Florida building code and with the Americans with Disabilities Act to move all the parking there. So, we've put the least number of parking in the front, so we met the minimum there. We've provided a nice landscape verge, if you will, across the street frontage with the sidewalk improvements. And we also have the entrance on the south side of the building. So, there are two entrances, and so you've got the split there from the use perspective for general consistency with the comprehensive plan. I also want to emphasize that the plan is advisory, so it's not a strict measurement. The problem we'd have if we tried to move all the parking, including the handicap, to the back and have the front doors at the front, we'd be inconsistent with the building codes and have to effectively, particularly with a medical clinic. Imagine someone might be coming either with a walker or cane or even a wheelchair and try to get to the medical clinic. If they've got to come all the way around the parking area and then get into the front, we're going to create more vehicle conflicts. The primary conflict that's identified by the planning commission staff is the once-a-week trash pickup crossing the driveway into the front of the building. That's actually not, it's not any different than the daily crossing of traffic across the public sidewalks that come into every commercial development. We've tried to minimize that, we've tried to bring the building as close to the front. Ideally, we wouldn't want to have the building right up on the street because that also then creates, if you will, an inconsistency with the neighborhood character. Because if you look at the residential areas that are to our south, the homes are set off of MacDill and create those yards. So, we've tried to mirror that with the landscaping and our setback to create that flow before you get into the more intensive commercial to the north. And I'll conclude with 30 seconds. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. I would like to go ahead and we wrote out another revised revision sheet, and go ahead and state these for the record. For the first one, cross out list waivers as listed on page one of this staff report. And we would list the waivers as written in this most recent revised revision sheet. Under Transportation, the second bullet point, revised waiver number one to be section 27 dash 283 dash 7 to reduce the required parking from 49 to 12 with a 75% reduction is the change. We would strike out the waiver number two as that is no longer needed. The two down from that show the loading provided to be four spaces. And then, the very last one, under Transportation, strike out, they hatch out the loading space shown in the front entrance. And then, to add, to shift the furthest east loading berth, further east past the entrance, move the most northern parking spot to the south side of the building. That's the one by the dumpster. And to shift the remaining three loading berths to the east to accommodate for that parking.
Thank you very much, Councilman Moran.
Excuse me. The medical officer of clinic has a doctor, I assume. So, in a doctor's office or a clinic, what's a parking ratio per doctor for a visit every 15 or 20 minutes? In other words, how many come in body-wise?
Jonathan Scott-Mobility. I don't know the answer to that, but we usually just have like a six per thousand parking for medical. But what you're asking, that's a good question. It kind of depends on the, how many patients they bring in and all that stuff.
And the reason I'm asking, years ago, and I can't tell you how long it's been, but we changed that because that's the highest use of people going in, is a doctor's office, I recall. We changed the amount of needed spaces for that profession. But I'm not sure, I don't think it's been changed, but it might have been. I had four years in absence.
Yeah, he's a clinic. Yeah, I don't think we really have any data for that, but I guess they're going to use clinic, which will be a little bit more. But yeah, I remember that way back when they, y'all had changed that and looked into that kind of in more detail. That's interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, is there any public comment for item number seven? Anybody in the public? Councilmember Clendenon, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, for our planning commission staff, the applicant in his presentation made a statement, which I don't believe was true. He said this was in conformity with future land use, and you guys found this inconsistent, correct?
Correct, we did not find this inconsistent based off of the uses because the uses can be considered within the future land use designation. We found it inconsistent based off of the parking being located at the front of the building and there only being one pedestrian connection that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. No public comment? Do you need any rebuttal, gentlemen?
Just available if there's any additional questions, thank you.
I like that as a petition, one, a couple of questions, if I may.
Go ahead.
When you say clinic, it could be any type of clinic. What type of clinic is it? Not a rehab clinic, is it? Not a medical clinic, is it? I don't know what it is.
It's proposed to be a medical clinic, not a rehab clinic.
What type of medical clinic?
We don't have a tenant at this point.
So, it could be any type of rehab, then?
I don't know, I don't know.
Wait, please come on up.
I'm going to ask the owners, person to come up.
Please state your name, sir, when you come up.
I'm Nick Duty with Martin Commercial, so I represent the development team. So, we're using as a proposed medical clinic, so more of a walk-in type clinic is what we're looking for.
Walk-in clinic for what type of walk-in clinic, for what?
For like urgent...
For illness?
Correct, yes.
I break my fingernail and I go in and get it done.
Correct, yeah, more urgent care type of clinic.
Not a medical clinic for rehab.
Correct, that's right.
You say that, not me.
Correct, yeah, it's not a, it's not for rehab, that's right.
Motion closed for discussion. Anything else? Motion to close, Councilmember Clendenon, second, drew a second. Second, Councilmember Carlson, all in favor? Alright, alright. The hearing is closed, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I, listening to the applicant on this, I would think I was, you're building something that was remarkable. And not what I'm seeing. You know, for the future land use, and for the reason why we have these policies is because we've redeveloped the city of Tampa, we're trying to redevelop it in a better way than what we currently, the current existing conditions. That's why that policy about parking and, and it's, and when you, I think it was disingenuous to stay about being not in compliance because the reason you're not in compliance is because of the type of usage that you're trying to put on this property. This property is perfectly developable, capable of being developed in a different way and a different, with a different product than what you're proposing. You're trying to propose something on this piece of property that doesn't fit and is not in harmony with the adjacent neighborhood nor the future land use. Hence, the pedestrian friendly, again, this is along MacDill and Columbus to critical transportation corridors. And, you know, I'm clearly not in support of this. It's not the type of development, it's not the type of building or service that should be put in this particular location, so I'm going to vote in opposition to it.
Anybody else? If not, I will ask Councilmember Hertech, would you like to read this item?
No.
Councilmember Carlson, you already read. Councilmember Miranda, would you like to read this?
No.
Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Viera, would you like to read this item?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Clendenon.
Okay. Wasn't really ready to do that, but I will. Okay. I move to deny file REZ 2504 for request to rezone the property generally located at 2711 North MacDill Avenue from CG to PD air-conditioned storage and clinic. The PD request does not provide a procedure which can relate to the type and design and layout of residential and non-residential development in the particular site. It does not promote or encourage development where the appropriate location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding impacted neighborhoods or built environment and existing geography. It does not promote more desirable living and working environments than would be possible through strict application of minimum requirements of other zoning districts, nor does it promote architectural features and elements which complement the surrounding community and enhance the overall quality of the development.
I would just recommend reading the section and the subsection number.
So, that was all from section 27, 136, thank you. Subsections 3, 6, 7, 8.
We have a...
Well, in addition to that, I agree with Steph's recommendation on inconsistency based on future land use and the lack of compliance with transportation and parking.
We have a motion for denial by Councilmember Clendenon. Do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Henderson? Yes. Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Hertech?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For denial.
Thank you very much. Motion of denial. Alright, we go to our last item of the night, which is item number nine.
Sam Thomas.
Yes, sir. Item number nine.
Yes, agenda item number nine is a request to rezone 5,200 South Manhattan Avenue from commercial-intensive to planned development for residential single-family attached. I'll turn it over to Emily Phelan with the planning commission.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. This is in the South Tampa Planning District in the Gandy Sun Bay South neighborhood. Portions of the subject site are located within the coastal high-hazard area, and it's in evacuation zone A. The subject site is here, and the surrounding area has a mix of commercial and residential uses. You can see the multifamily here and the single-family detached here, and the commercial uses are located to the east. This is the adopted future land use of the subject site. To the north, east, and south of the subject site is the community commercial 35 zoning, the future land use district, which the subject site is as well. And to the west is residential 10, and further is the community mixed-use 35. The proposed density is 18.24 units per acre, or 52% of the maximum allowed under the CC 35 designation. Given the non-residential nature of West Pearl Avenue, Pearl Street, and the existing multifamily development to the north, planning commission staff finds the request compatible with the surrounding area. The PD provides a transition from the single-family detached homes to the west to the more intensive non-residential uses to the east, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Additionally, neighborhood policy 1.1.2 emphasizes the importance of protecting and enhancing single-family neighborhoods by ensuring sensitive transitions between neighborhoods and adjoining areas. Furthermore, the request will provide additional housing and proximity to transit and commercial services without adversely affecting the character of the surrounding area. The site is within a mixed-use corridor and should address mixed-use centers and corridor policies outlined in the comprehensive plan. Additionally, land use policy 9.2.6 encourages single-family attached developments to orient front doors toward... towards neighborhood sidewalks and streets. In cases when internal units cannot orient toward a neighborhood sidewalk or street, pedestrian connections from the front door to adjacent public rights away are encouraged. The intent of this policy is to connect unit entrances to adjacent public rights away. Based on our review, the current design does not fully align with this policy guidance as the front doors to buildings three, four, five, eight, nine, and ten are oriented toward an internal drive aisle and do not connect to a neighborhood sidewalk and street. To address this, the applicant has agreed to make the following revisions between first and second readings. Label the front doors to units in buildings three, four, five, eight, nine, and ten, and reorient the unit front entrances in buildings four, five, eight, and nine to face the proposed internal sidewalk and courtyard. Show the label, show and label the second entrances in buildings three and ten that face the sidewalk along the northern property boundary and add pedestrian connections from the second entrances of buildings three and ten to the sidewalk along the northern property boundary. Add a pedestrian connection from the front doors for buildings three and ten that face the private roadway to the sidewalk in between units, buildings three and ten. And finally, provide crosswalk connections from the internal sidewalks to the public sidewalks along adjacent streets and to the sidewalk along the northern property boundary. With these revisions, it would align with the plan's emphasis on pedestrian connectivity while minimizing conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. Unit front entrances for buildings one, two, six, and seven already align with the policy direction as they are oriented towards West Pearl Avenue and South Manhattan Avenue. If the proposed revisions are made between first and second readings, the PD will adequately address land use policy nine point two point six and related design policies for the mixed-use corridors and centers. Additionally, the PD is improving pedestrian connectivity by retaining an existing sidewalk along West Pearl Street and proposing a new sidewalk along South Manhattan Avenue. The request also supports many policies within the comprehensive plan as related to housing needs of Tampa's present and future populations and is providing diverse housing opportunities that are efficiently served by transit while maintaining the character of established residential neighborhoods. Overall, the proposed PD is consistent with the policy direction of the comprehensive plan. The request is consistent with the development pattern anticipated under the CC thirty-five designation and is compatible with the surrounding area. That concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Yes, sir.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination, we'll start with our aerial map. See the subject site outlined in right here on South Manhattan Avenue and West Pearl Avenue. To the north of the subject site, you have CI zoning that is developed with multifamily uses. You have, uh, more CI zoning to the east and to the south, that's development, commercial uses. As you move a little bit farther south, you have CG zoning. To the southwest of the subject site, you have a planned development that's, um, developed with single-family attached and semi-detached uses. And then if you move a little bit further southwest, you can see some more, um, single-family attached uses there. Directly across from the subject site here, you have, and over here, you have RS fifty zoning. This parcel right here is developed with a place of religious assembly. And then the other parcel directly across from this, um, subject site is a single-family home. Then as you move farther north, you get close to Gandy Boulevard where you have additional commercial uses. We'll move to the site plan provided by the applicant now. So here is the site plan. And I'll explain some more of the details of the changes that Emily spoke about earlier so that it can make a little bit more sense with the site plan. So, the applicant is proposing fifty-four single-family attached units, um, with ten buildings. Uh, the buildings one and, one and two here oriented towards South Manhattan Avenue with pedestrian connections to the sidewalk proposed on South Manhattan Avenue. Building six and seven oriented towards West Pearl Avenue and have pedestrian connections to the sidewalk that exists there already. Buildings four, five, eight, and nine, as Emily, Emily mentioned, um, Planning Commission staff, Development Coordination staff, and applicant work together to reorient some of these front doors and add additional pedestrian connections, so their front doors will be oriented towards this internal courtyard with a sidewalk. And then, and that'll be done between first and second reading. Then buildings three and ten here, their front doors are going to be oriented towards this private roadway, but they will have second entrances, or a second, yeah, second entrances facing this northern property line where there's an additional sidewalk that runs along that vacated right-of-way to the sidewalk on this proposal on South Manhattan Avenue. And then additionally, um, more pedestrian connections will be added. They'll be adding some pedestrian connections along the front doors here to connect to the sidewalk there. Same here, crosswalks will be added here, here, and then another crosswalk will be added there. So that will all be done between first and second reading. Um, vehicular access to the site is proposed from South Manhattan Avenue and then West Pearl Avenue as well. A hundred and thirty-five parking spaces are required and a hundred and eighty-one parking spaces are provided. Each unit contains a two-car garage. So the garages for these units would be back here, and then you have garages for these units here, here and here, and then along there as well. For buildings, uh, three, four, five, eight, nine, and ten, there are driveways provided. Um, while the units that are facing the, um, public streets, uh, do not have, um, driveways, just garages. There's additionally on-street parking that will be proposed through, um, a right-of-way permit, this is outside of the rezoning, uh, but the applicant is showing those on the site plan. Those however are not counted towards their overall parking that is being provided, since they will have to be pursued separately through the right-of-way permit. The applicant additionally is preserving a thirty-one inch live grand oak here and then a thirty-three, um, inch grand live oak here. And they're also preserving a cluster of live oaks along the eastern property line. So I'll show you some pictures now, I'm gonna try to, or the elevations in pictures. So these are the typical elevations for buildings one and six. Elevations for buildings two and seven. Elevations for buildings four, five, eight, and nine. And then lastly, the elevations for buildings three and ten. So I'll try to quickly run through some pictures, this is another quite large site that's over two acres. So, um, kind of a decent amount of pictures to try to walk through the entire site. This is along West Pearl Avenue, so we're looking towards South Manhattan Avenue from here. This is the subject site there. This is looking north, um, from West Pearl Avenue. This is that cluster of live oaks along the, um, eastern property line that are going to be preserved. This is looking back east on West Pearl Avenue at those, um, commercial uses that are in the commercial intensive zoning district. Moving further, um, west along Pearl Avenue, this is looking north at the subject site, this is the backside of it. This is looking south across Pearl Avenue at, um, some of those commercial intensive uses that are just south of the subject site. Moving closer to South Manhattan now, you can see the existing structure on the subject site. It's looking north at the backside of the existing structure. And now we're getting closer to the intersection of, um, West Pearl and South Manhattan Avenue. You can see some more of those commercial intensive uses and then you can see those single-family attached, um, units that I mentioned earlier across the street. We've now got to the intersection, you can see the subject site here, single-family attached uses and the place of religious assembly. This is looking north at the subject site, so you have South Manhattan here. Now we're looking back east towards those commercial intensive uses, um, east of the subject site on Pearl Avenue. Looking south at the intersection of Pearl and South Manhattan, you have the single-family attached uses. There's a better view of those single-family attached uses that are southwest catty corner from the subject site. Now we're looking north on Manhattan Avenue, here's the subject site here, place of religious assembly is there. There's a better view of that place of religious assembly that's directly across the street. Looking east from South Manhattan Avenue at the subject site. Moving farther north, here's another view, looking east at the subject site from South Manhattan Avenue. Looking north on Manhattan, moving towards Gandy Boulevard. There's a, this is now that we're getting towards the northern end of the subject site, looking east from Manhattan. And now we're looking west across the street, um, across Manhattan Avenue, across from the subject site, this is the single-family home that I said is directly across from it. You can note that they have a six-foot tall fence here, this is indicating that this is their side yard. The, um, single-family homes that are across the street are oriented not towards Manhattan Avenue, but towards the side streets that come off Manhattan Avenue. And there's a better view of those streets, how they're oriented towards this side street here versus towards Manhattan. This is looking at that vacated right-of-way that runs along the northern section of the, um, subject site. And here is that multifamily that exists directly north of the subject site, um, in that CI zoning district. And then you can kind of see Gandy Boulevard and the expressway connector in the distance. And there's a better view of that multifamily directly north of the subject site. Site plan backup. Development Coordination and Compliance Staff reviewed the application and find the request to be consistent. Should it be the pleasure of council to approve the application, modifications to the site plan as shown on the submitted revision sheet must be completed between first and second reading. I'm available if there are any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening, Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillwater Henderson, and in the interest of time, we're gonna go ahead and give our planning presentation first.
Hello, sir, please state your name.
I want to zoom out a little bit there, but. Um, thank you, sorry, my name is Stephen Spazato, I am a certified planner with Level Up Consulting. Been practicing in Florida, um, I've been a practicing planner for over thirty years and most of that time, uh, in Florida. I hope not to be too, too redundant based on the, the detail of, of the presentation, presentations you've already received. But this is a redevelopment of an existing site with a longstanding warehouse. It consists of a large parking area. Oh, sorry. Can you, can y'all see?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, okay. So it consists of a large parking area, a central building and other accessory structures that comp plan and zoning are already in place to facilitate a, a range of development options. Um, it's a dynamic place, has vitality, and it represents an opportunity for, uh, to exercise quality planning. This is a place where people want to live, uh, work, and shop. And it's facilitated through the historical development pattern and then supported, uh, by the comp plan and the, the current, again, zoning designation. And working with the applicant, we intentionally chose the PD, um, process to allow for both transparency and a, and a collaborative, um, design process. We did hold a community meeting, we sent out invitations to approximately five hundred, uh, unique addresses. Uh, our presentation will demonstrate that the redevelopment will benefit the immediate area and, and the nearby area and is consistent with the comp plan and compatible with, with adjacent development. This is similar to what you have already seen, but, um, I, I like this view because from a planning perspective, you can see how sort of the, the land use is formed by the policy guidance and you can see the boundary along, uh, Manhattan. To the west is single-family residential, and then our site, red, allows for a mix of uses including single-use, uh, residential. And I just wanted to point out that we are substantially less dense than what the CC, I mean, uh, yeah, the CC thirty-five designation allows. I think you've heard quite a bit about, uh, what is adjacent. We just colored, um, the land uses typically, single-family yellow, shows the church directly adjacent, adjacent apartments, uh, to the south, which have, has the same zoning, um, and, but they achieved with the development here based on the special use, uh, process. And then to the, to the east, there's the dog, uh, boarding facility, and then we have small-scale residential to the south. What we're doing clearly is not in a, in a vacuum, sorry. The CI designation, the commercial intensive designation, uh, allows many uses by right, which doesn't require PD or special use, that's more intense than the proposed, intensity often is measured by traffic, um, hours of operation, sight lighting, those, those kinds of things. Again, these are just examples, and I apologize if that is not straight, there we go. These are just examples of, of things that would, uh, be allowed by right. The next series of slides, I'm gonna focus on the design and, um, there'll be several, several different slides. This one, uh, i- is the PD plan, we, we, um, have added some color, uh, to, to show, uh, parking. But quick orientation, and I, I know that Sam went over it, but, um, you can see that we have units on South Manhattan. Uh, front doors facing South Manhattan and front doors facing West Pearl. And then we have what we're calling sort of the interior, interior units, which are here, uh, and, and here. And then of course, our, you know, we have access point here and access point here and circulation, you know, around, around the site. Uh, we have substantially, we know parking is a significant issue, we have significantly more parking than required by, by the code. We're at three point three-five units per u, per, three, I'm sorry, three point three-five spaces per unit, whereas two point two-five, including the visitor parking is required. And just, just real, just to kind of show how we're accommodating parking is, the, the brown here along these, on the edge of our buildings, these are, include two-car garages as well as all of the interior units, this showing the tan colors here, tan here, tan here, also have two-car garages, and then the purple, we're showing the purple right here. These units, which have slightly smaller, uh, garages, um, have two full parking spaces in, in front of the garages. Also noting, um, we're, we're proposing, you can see in the southeast corner, a dumpster, so, uh, we'll not be utilizing, um, dump, uh, rollout containers, uh, they won't, there won't be rollout containers in the garages, so we have utilizing the dumpsters. This is an illustration of our, uh, site plan. A focus of our design is, again, circulation and kind of the, the, the concept of the, the drive aisle as it relates to townhouses. And so, um, we delineated the minimum separation between buildings where there's a, an aisle or an accessway. So here you see thirty-seven point five, forty-two point five, and sixty, sixty feet. We have, uh, uh, twenty-four, the, the drive aisles or the accessways themselves are twenty-four feet. So all this is twenty-four feet, and that's a standard width similar to the pavement on Manhattan, similar to the pavement on, on, uh, Pearl. What we're not doing is, is here, um, that, and that's, that's a graphic from, um, a presentation that was given to the city council a little while back, I think in December of, of twenty twenty-three. We're also, um, just to be clear, um, we are also not doing any of this. Again, shows, uh, units back-to-back on an alley without any landscaping, uh, courtyards, that kind of thing. Green space, tree preservation, also very important to, to the, uh, to matinee and to the, the design of our site. We revised our plan to accommodate, um, an almost grand oak here, you see the spacing, and then, uh, the grand oak here. Kind of the theme is that we're providing more than required, and that's the same here, we're providing substantially more green space, um, uh, than required. We're also, um, and kind of, as Sam indicated, I think this, this plan actually shows it a little bit better. Again, the, the, the units along Manhattan and Pearl front directly on, uh, a refurbished sidewalk that we're gonna, that, that will be done along, uh, Pearl. And then a brand-new sidewalk along South Manhattan that will close the gap, because currently the sidewalk stops right here and that, you know, again, was shown by, by the photographs, uh, earlier. And then, what, does that, um, let me see that, this is a, a, okay. Sorry. Stormwater management is another factor, um, a lot of what we heard at the community meeting, it had to do with, with, with stormwater. And as a resident we, of Tampa, I understand the significance of this, especially given what occurred over the last year. So we, we did, uh, more engineering, uh, than you typically do as part of the rezone and, um, and to help, you know, to, both to, to, uh, to understand the site as well as to. to help, you know, both to, to, to understand the site as well as to, you know, again, address, address questions that there might be regarding this issue. The, the left is the current site. This is existing development. It shows the impervious and the sort of this pink color, and then the pervious is, is the green. And then on the, this side is our site, showing how, how we break up the mass of parking and add green spaces, you know, and, but we're, we're significantly, we're significantly, or we have significantly more pervious area than what is currently on the site. Also, consistent with the stormwater advisory list recommendation, we're not utilizing any credits from the existing impervious area. And we're also modernizing the stormwater system based on current requirements. The... This is just a street, a street scape rendering of what West Pearl will look like. It activates the, the, the street as a public space. It has, you can see the enhancements that we're providing, including parking, landscaping, and then the front doors, as well as the architecture, all lend to activate that, that street for public use. This is just an oblique view of the, the site. Again, kind of showing how it fits with the adjacent development, both north into the east. I'll just quickly summarize. I think we've achieved a high-level design, again, again, without, sorry, without the need for waivers. We're not maximizing density. We're not, we're reducing impervious. We're exceeding parking, and we're protecting existing trees. I have one last slide, I promise. There are eight review criteria for the PD process, site plan district, five of which are applied to our project site. They're outlined on this slide. We have positive findings for each, also confirmed by staff. Not going to go into each, each one of those, but in my professional opinion, which is also, again, confirmed by, by your staff report, the proposal is consistent with the comp plan and compatible with adjacent development, and it fits, fits the intent of the PD process. And with that, in my very awkward use of the Elmo, turn it over to Mac.
Thank you, Stephen.
Your name, sir?
I'm Mac McCraw. I'm a resident of Tampa. I live at 3,000 West San Nicholas Street in Tampa, and I am the applicant for the rezoning. I'm also the representative for Madamy Homes. And I, it was, you guys did a great job, Stephen. Thank you. We've got, I don't want to get too redundant, but just to tell you a little bit about Madamy, we've been around for 45 years. We've been focused in the west coast of Florida for 10 years. I've been with the company for 10 years, and I'm really excited that we're in Tampa. This is my first time in front of you guys, and I, I enjoy that because I live in Tampa. I live in Palmesea Park. My wife and I have lived there for 21 years with our family. Madamy Homes is focused on sustainability. I know that's important to everybody, but I will leave here for the record, our 62-page sustainability report, which is part of our, is on our external website. We say it, we mean it, we're focused on it, and all of our projects are trying to incorporate ways to get to a carbon-neutral, net-zero environment. That's, that's what we're focused on, and we're doing that in all of our communities. In fact, we're leading the way in, in Tampa with carbon-neutral or carbon-captured concrete, and now other builders are starting to utilize that. So we're kind of a leader in that industry and trying to, and trying to be focused on the environment. I love Tampa. Like I said, I grew up here. I, I know that growth comes with some growing pains, and we'll likely hear about some of those tonight, but I see the benefits. I love the revitalized walkability. I love the dedicated bike pass, the energy, the new restaurants. I mean, we all, Tampa is just a great place to live, so you just know why we want to come and invest, invest here and build homes, quality homes. So growth, growth brings more tax revenue from new developments, and these dollars are helping Tampa modernize and replace the aging infrastructure. We can see the results of these efforts across the city, and while construction can be disruptive, these improvements are making Tampa an even more attractive place to live. Modernizing also creates more variety of housing. We've heard about that from the planners. With finished floors, it's supported above the base flood elevations. We have heard, and I'm going to leave some, some letters of support in the record, we've heard, and you guys have gotten them, but they came in late today, so I just want to make sure on the record, but we've heard from citizens that want new housing that's above the floodplain, especially in the mid-range pricing, and that's what we're going to offer. The missing middle is what your planning reports refer to it as. So I do think voting no on a thoughtfully planned project is only putting more burden on our constrained housing supply and making Tampa an even more unaffordable place to live. So Madamy's project is about creating new housing in the heart of the city where demand is strongest and where people like me want to stay and live. I intend to live here for the rest of my life. I need, you know, housing is expensive. It's really expensive, and this, this solves some of that need. I love that this project is in my hometown. Being from Tampa, it was important for me to meet with the residents. We, we intentionally did the PD so that we could meet with the stakeholders. We notified, over 500 letters were sent in a, in a half-mile ra, or quarter-mile radius. We only had to send letters out 300 feet. We did a quarter-mile, 500 letters. We spoke to many people. Some were in support. We had a great, very, as they call it, a lively and robust meeting at the Gandy Civic Association. Thank you for, for meeting us there and hosting. And I think we've addressed a lot of their feedback, and we have a better plan because of it. It's a better plan because of the results of those meetings. And with that, I just want to just reiterate, it's consistent, it's compatible, there's no waivers, it's an allowable use in the, in the CI land use category. We respectfully ask for your approval tonight. I do want to add, we, after our meeting with them, we have a, between the first and second reading...
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. You can, you'll have time for rebuttal after public comment. Councilmember, please.
I just have one question. From the site plan, can you show me where the, you're going to accommodate residential garbage? I was trying to find it.
It was right here.
Yeah. What about just trash cans for the residents?
Right here.
So that's a dumpster. What about just residential trash cans?
That's, they won't, they won't be. They will go to the dumpster.
Okay, so they just, they just bring it right from the house to the dumpster?
Yeah, we'll, our HOA will have a porter service that will come by and pick up garbage and make sure it gets into the trash.
Gotcha. So are these going to be fee simple for-sale units? Is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number nine?
Of course.
Come on up. You don't have to raise your hand. You just come on up one by one. Good evening. Please state your name.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sandy Diego Sanchez, and I'm here to speak for Carol Ann Bennett, who is sick and did not have chance to arrange for a conference call. So I'd like to read her message to the council, if I may.
Go ahead.
It says, "Dear council members, I am recovering from the flu, and I thought I would be able to attend tonight, but I overdid things yesterday, and I need to rest and put my health first. On March 7th, 2024, you were told by staff that 18-by-18 garages are not usable for two cars. You were told that people would be forced to jump out the windows. Staff stated, 'I talked to many architects with lots of experience building many homes, and they said two-car garages should be a minimum of 20 feet by 20.' I asked them about making the garage smaller, and they said, quote, 'We don't do that. It's not a good idea to even consider it.'" In the DRC comment, the Transportation Department asked them to make the garages 20 by 20 feet. The developer has refused to do that. Therefore, in the real world, these are one-car garages. There are two-car garages only in a make-believe world. The question you council members must ask yourself is, do Tampa citizens live in a make-believe world? Do they want me to approve make-believe garages? We all know the answer is no. At that March meeting, you council members said that you do not want developers building unusable garages. Therefore, you must make the developer increase the garages to 20 by 20, even if they must reduce the number of units to accomplish this. That is the responsible and honest thing to do. If you don't, it means that in the real world, they will build 54 one-car garages. It means that in the real world, they do not meet their parking requirements. If you don't, it means that in the real world, you'll be creating daily frustration and stress for the new owners because people don't know a real estate listing where the two-car garages only make believe. Please acquire the high-quality, real-world development Tampa deserves. Please say no to mediocrity. Please say no to make-believe world. Thank you, Carol Ann Bennett."
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Mayer. May I approach and give you some handouts?
Sure. Please hand them to the attorney, and he'll put them in the record.
Good evening, council members. As I said, my name is Eileen Mayer. I am in opposition to the rezoning proposal. There are multiple reasons to oppose this property being rezoned residential, including flooding, stormwater, drainage, overpopulation, and traffic. Tonight, I just want to address the traffic issue. If you look at my handout, I'm sorry, I didn't have the presentation. I think we've all seen the zone, obviously. This is the property in question. But right diagonal across the street is already townhomes. Besides that, it's not on my map, but right, right over here are legacy townhomes. So within this property right here is M-South. M-South, which I believe has 288 units. So within feet, within walking distance, there are three other residential developments. All the roads south of Gandy are single lanes with the exception of Dale Mayberry Highway. I think most of us live here in Tampa, so we all kind of know that. Let me switch page. If you, I've listed all the apartments, townhomes, and condos. And as you can see, there's a plethora of them. This is a photo I took only last Thursday night. So last Thursday night, as you can see the traffic, this is Wallace Circle. This is two blocks from the property in question. So as you can see, the traffic is already beyond Wallace Circle and all the way down to Oklahoma. Last Thursday was not a holiday. There was no accidents. I came from the other side of Manhattan. I crossed Gandy. There's no accidents holding up. This is just normal, average rush hour traffic. I live on Wallace Circle. There's one way in and one way out, which is on Manhattan. So I am, I am somebody who travels Manhattan Avenue every single day. I just want to go to the last page, page number eight. If you flip to page number eight, right here is a study. This study is done by City of Tampa. Here's the source. Here's your website. They have service levels. The lowest level is an F. Manhattan is already an F, so you can't go any lower than that. Also, West Shore is in the same thing. So anybody that lives in the West Shore area is going to cut over to Manhattan, or Manhattan people cut over to West Shore, place versa. There's a tremendous amount of growth, but I'm opposed to the, I'm opposed to the rezoning. As I said, the traffic is already horrible, and until you widen the roads on West Shore in Manhattan, it won't get any better. So adding more residential is irresponsible, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name.
Good evening. Tom Schreiber, 810 South Bayside Drive, Tampa. My, my property, the property, the subject property is at the northeast corner of Manhattan. My property is on the southeast corner of Manhattan. Also have a property, that's a property's at 40, 5220 South Manhattan. I also have a property at 4314 Pearl Avenue. The reason I'm familiar with the property, it was an old Borden's plant. I'm in the food distribution business, and when I saw, I had called Texas to see if I could perhaps purchase the building. My zoning is C, commercial intensive. So we talk about traffic. I could put a gas station in there and not ask for any permission and have a lot of people run, coming and going. Also, if they don't, if they did not buy that property, they could run 40-foot reefers in and out of there all day long, and they don't need a variance. When I saw, when I talked to Mac and I saw what was going on, I said, "This is a beautiful piece of property. There's plenty of parking, plenty of green space." Right now, if you go there, it's all cement. During the floods, which my house flooded, five feet of water, Manhattan and our two, the two buildings I have on Manhattan, we didn't get an ounce of water in the buildings. So from a flood standpoint, it's not happening. I think that's a beautiful project. I think I'm about as nervous as he is. But also, if that project proceeds, there's going to be some beautiful things done in that area because it's a mishmash on, on the east side of, of CI zoning. So it depends on what's going with. I hope this is approved because if not, you could open up for more, they could turn it back into a manufacturing facility, a cold storage facility. I think it's a beautiful project, and I'm not sure about the two-car garages, but I think they have a lot of parking, a lot of green space. So I am 150% in favor of this project, and I'm a landowner within, right across the street, and I bought, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am. Next speaker. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? If so, please line up against the wall so we get an idea.
Please acknowledge you're here and you're waiving your three minutes to give the speaker an extra minute. Andy Johnson. Thank you. Astro Portella. Thank you. Deborah Steele. Thank you. Christina Stafford. Thank you. And Denise McHugh. One, two, three, four, five, names.
Thank you very much. Please state your name.
Stephanie Pointer. I would like to point out very, very specifically that what this gentleman came up here and told you is not what's in on base. It's not what's in Ocelot. And I'm going to show you some documents that are in on base and are in Ocelot. And this is not the project that they presented to the neighborhoods. And there are multiple folks in this room who were there, that they did not present this to us. Okay, so number one, I would like to point out that, oh, what's going to happen if I take this and I pour all of it into this glass? It's going to run over, right? Because it's too much. It's more than we can handle. We're full, just like this glass would be, and then the water comes running out everywhere. That's what SOG is. So just keep that in mind. The townhouses on the, on the southeast side, they were, they were built in, before 2005, which is before the CHHA. Just saying. Okay, so while I've seen worse projects this week, I've given you a spreadsheet of the other projects in SOG. And, and by the time we get finished, we're going to be at 10,537 extra units since 2016, since M-South was built. So that nice lady's pointed out M-South, and I'm just reminding you, since that built, since those apartments, those were apartments long before I started on this. I highlighted in 2024, look at all these apartment complexes, that their taxes have went down in the 2024 column because they weren't full. They have doubled our townhouses south of Gandy since 2016. This is in a response to the DRC. Jonathan Scott asked, recommended that the garages be 20 by 20. That's not what they are. That's not what they were on the site plans that were turned in, in on base. And I don't know if you can see it, and you'll have to ask Mr. Thomas if he has an updated version because I haven't seen it. It wasn't in there today because I just pulled this stuff off today. So these say that the garages are 18 by 18. Now, this gentleman just got up here and said they were going to be 20 foot, seven inches. Here's the problem with that. You know, I love math. I love basic math. So this particular set of units is 144 feet wide. Divide that by six. That's 24 inches. But what they fail to talk about is that the front doors are there. Now, every front door I've ever seen has to be at least 36 inches wide because if not, you can't get your refrigerator in there. You can't get your stove in there. It has to be 36 inches wide. So that brings them down to 21 feet. And I'm not even talking about the door frame. So 21 feet, but you've got to take into account that, guess what? Cinder blocks are eight inches wide. And if it's only 24, if it's only 21 inches wide, and you've got to put in eight-inch cinder blocks on each side, then you lose even more space. So where they got that 20-foot-wide by 20-foot-deep number, I don't know. It wasn't what was in, on base today. If they, if you're going to plan in front of city council, we should do it every day. We should do it every day. This, this plan was incomplete. It's been brought... This, this plan was incomplete, it's been brought in here and been changed in front of your faces. Okay, next, um, let's see. Oh, the waiver, I like this, and this is in your packet. Remove the waiver from the site plan. That's what city staff said to do. The waiver that they're removing from the site plan is where the, they don't face the street. Which we all know, they just showed you, they don't face the street. And here, and here's the problem with that. And it says the enclosure of the front doors for buildings three and 10 face a private roadway. They have to face the private roadway, right? So this is your storefront with, with the 18 by 18 garages. And then it says four, five, and eight, which are these in here, they all have to open this way. But here's the thing. This is what they're showing on that side. Y'all, when have y'all ever seen a front sliding patio door? You don't. They're 3476, it's glass inserts. So you can't, they're not even 36 inches wide. Because they don't open all the way, they have to always overlap. So you can't make those the front door the way it is. Why did they come in here tonight and tell you that they were doing something different? I don't know, because this is what's in on base today. Okay, next. These are always my favorite. So if we've got 18 by 18 garages, you know what, you know what that means? That means we have one-car garages. And all these units here, they don't have a driveway. Now, these here, we can live with, because they all have driveways big enough to put their cars in. Okay? It is what it is. But these are all one-car garages, because they're 18 by 18. Because you cannot stretch 21 feet, you cannot make a 20-foot garage. Because you got to take the 16 inches out for the, for the blocks. The other thing that I noticed, we are at, you know, I, I know that we have this green space thing, but we're at 24% per, impermeable surface. That's not much, one quarter. And they say, oh, but now, right now, it's, it's all, it's all impermeable. Well, what about this three-to-four-foot ditch? Nice ditch, that is built on, all the way on the west side and all the way on the north side? Where it kept all that water from running off into the road. Now, just to the north of there, this, notice this says June of 2024, folks. This was not hurricane time. This happens every time we get a good rain. This was four hours after it rained. And we had so much rain there that the police had to come and sit on either side of it. So where do you think that rainwater's going to go that's not going to be held in that ditch anymore? I don't know, y'all, y'all figure it out. Y'all, y'all are much smarter than I am. And this is Pearl Avenue. They showed you nice, dry pictures of Pearl Avenue. This is the street, this is the other street. Okay, so these are the two cross streets where we want to build all this impermeable surface. Let me tell you something. This gentleman just came up here and said, well, it could be a gas station, it could be this, it could be that. But guess what? Nobody evacuates from any of those. No one evacuates from any of those. They're not filling up our cup anymore. They are giving people jobs. Every bit of these 10,000 units, damn near all of them, were built on commercial or industrial property. We've lost over 100 acres of commercial and industrial property in the city of Tampa in the last 10 years. And yet, here we are again, with people who have an incomplete plan. Please ask Mr. Thomas if he knew about the 20 by 20 garages. Please ask him if he knew. Oh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, I almost forgot. Hold on, hold on, hold on. So now, we're going to make our front doors here. Now, if you look at this, you're making it into a side, it, it's looking at a sidewalk, okay? But they've got fences all around it, it took me a while to figure out. But it says, staff says that these are the front doors. That's what staff says it has to do, right? But again, here's your site plan. It says that the, the front doors are on the garage side of the house. Now, they can't do this and this. So their site, their project is not complete, according to these two documents right here.
Thank you very much.
They don't make any sense. Please don't approve this. It's ridiculous.
Is there anybody else that is going to be coming up to speak? If not, the gentleman in the black t-shirt against the wall will be the last public comment. All right, sir, come on up, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Tom Kirsten, resident of South Tampa. I live just south of Plant High School, 3603 West Granada. I do have an affiliation to this site, or this project, in, in the way of my employer, who offers transactional or brokerage services. Started off on, as behalf of the, the group that purchased this property. I believe now we're in a transactional role between buyer and seller. I would, just listening tonight, I would support the prior gentleman that, that came up, his concern.
Just a moment, sir. Mr. Shelby, would be, would he be considered part of the petition for what he just said?
How are you related to the applicant?
My place of employment.
Your place of employment, how is?
Franklin Street, which is a brokerage service that has the listing on behalf of the current owner of this property. And we delivered this site to several developers in town. So we're now in a transactional capacity, because we represent the current owner, and we've brought it to the proposed developer.
So you have, you have an interest in the outcome of this transaction, is that correct?
My company does.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be to, to allow the comments, but although take into account knowing that the relationship that the, and, and you can weigh the testimony accordingly.
All right. You go ahead, you'll, you'll then stay within your three minutes there, keep going.
Sure. So current owner, just supporting, wasn't even intending to talk, but supporting the gentleman's comments that has concern about what could end up here. We have an out-of-state opportunistic investor that owns this property. They're agnostic to what goes here. It would likely be another industrial use. Being a resident for 15 years here, and I've driven up and down this quarter countless times to Monroe Middle School to take my sons to soccer, I really don't see the issue with the traffic. I've been doing it forever. I also am a, a small company owner and employer. We own a business at the intersection of Euclid and Manhattan. My wife offers developmental services to children. We operate on Manhattan all the time. And the improvements that we've seen in our corridor, we've welcomed. And I think this type of improvement, south of Gandy, would be the same thing. It's, it's going to lift the community. The other thing I would say is, we employ 14 licensed professionals at our company that have masters and doctorate degrees and can't afford to live in the neighborhood where they work. So I think attainable housing is certainly something that should be entertained. And then within our brokerage company, we employ over 100 employees in South Tampa, or working in South Tampa, all of which are looking in St. Pete and other areas, because they can't afford to live where they work. So I think this project supports a much-needed attainable housing and need for the community.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, sir, you're the final speaker. Please come on up and state your name.
Hi, my name is Agustin Sinchan. I am not affiliated to, to the applicant at all. My relationship is that we own property, my family owns property for like the last 20 years, at 5600 South Manhattan Avenue. I am for the project. I believe it's, it, from what currently exists at the project now, warehouse or absentee owner warehouse, I think it's beautiful from the renderings I saw. It adds to the neighborhood, and it gives that opportunity for 54 families to live in the neighborhood, which could not before. And, you know, I see, I don't see any negatives to it. I only see positives by what is currently proposed and what currently exists or what can be built there, according to zoning.
Thank you very much, sir. Go, go ahead, sir, I apologize.
No, that's all, that's all, I'm all for the project. Based on that, what I, reason why I am, because I seen the, I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years. And I think a project like that, and what currently exists there, is only going to add to, add to the neighborhood in a positive way. Giving 54 families an opportunity to own in that neighborhood, which couldn't possibly own before, because there's probably not a shortage of housing, is a positive, and I don't see much of a negative.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. That'll conclude public comment. I'd just like to announce that Councilmember Carlson has gone home sick. So you will have six members tonight, Councilman Vera is virtual. Just want to let you know. At this time, we'll have rebuttal. If the applicant has rebuttal, you have five minutes, come on up.
Cammy Corbett again, with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. I'd like to ask Steve Henry to come up real quickly and address the traffic issues that were raised.
Come on up, sir, please state your name.
Good afternoon, Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607. I want to address the, the traffic issue. And what I've got here is a graphic that shows a comparison. It's of what is proposed, which is shown in green, versus the existing use that's out there today, in blue. And then also what uses could be built there under the current CI zoning, just to share with the traffic. So from the standpoint of the proposed and the existing, it's virtually the same. This is daily traffic, and I'll give you the AM and PM also. But if we look at a restaurant, a gas convenience, or retail, significantly more traffic. Then if we go to the AM peak hour, again, the, the green is the, is the proposed, blue is the existing, yellow are the other uses. Yeah, about the same for what is existing there today versus what we're proposing. Significant increase over the other commercial uses. And again, this is the PM peak hour, same thing. The existing and proposed are about the same, with the commercial a significant increase in traffic. So from a traffic standpoint, this is not an increase in traffic, it's actually about the same as what's out there today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes, ma'am.
Cammy Corbett again. To clarify the issues with the garages, you were shown this image. And you'll see that we have two different types of garages. Some are 18.97 by 20, and those are the ones that have the driveway, two-car driveways. These garages along the perimeter are the 20 by 20. And again, I think the 20 by 20 recommendation was when there are trashcans to be stored inside of the garage. We're not doing that here. And just to put a finer point on, we've talked a lot about what the existing zoning is. Make it clear, that it is zoned CI. That is, allows a person to ask for multifamily residential, townhome, industrial, restaurant, whatever. The, the townhomes could have been approved through an S1 process. And we really thought, talked about that, and we're very thoughtful about. We want to meet with the resident leaders first, before we even file. We want to get their input. They did press us on parking, they did press us on garage sizes, and they pressed us on tree preservation. And we were happily able to achieve all those goals. And very rarely do you have an opportunity in this area for a developer to come in and voluntarily say, we're willing to be 60% of the total allowable density in this area. And we're willing to double the parking, and we're willing to double the open space. And there are special stormwater criteria rules that were attached to this site, as we talked about earlier, and we're perfectly fine complying with that. And this is a development that's found, found consistent and compatible with your existing comprehensive plan and your land development code. And I just really don't see any basis for a denial this evening. We're happy to talk about some of the issues, should you have questions about anything that was presented. But we have proposed a plan that is consistent with your code and below what your comprehensive plan allows. And without everything, anything else?
We have a motion closed from Councilmember Clendenon. Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Clendenon?
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it on up.
I want to see the garage.
I could put it, I could put it up.
Wait.
Yes.
No.
Oh, I just wanted to look at it. We have the. Oh, okay. Motion closed in a second, if you want to vote on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, sir, the, the hearing is closed. Now, we'll ask the question, Councilmember Clendenon has to speak first.
Yeah, I'm, this may surprise folks, and I'm sure it's going to disappoint some folks, some of my good friends. But, you know, this is one of those situations where you can't say no to everything. And this is, this is not one of those high-density developments that we're seeing, you know, multi-story apartment complexes that are extraordinarily dense and intense, you know, which is significantly overbuilt, some of these areas. These are single-family attached. And, well, I'm not particularly fond of the aesthetics of them. But, you know, that's not, that's not what we're here to discuss. They, they, it, obviously, these folks have listened to counsel, because these driveways and these, these private streets are wider. They, they, so they can accommodate the vehicles and backing up. The garages that are, they're not, they're almost 19 feet, which is, is, in my eye, is substandard, but they did accommodate with driveways. So their, their, their parking is going to be sufficient, because even if it's a one-car garage, they can accommodate another car in the driveway, for the smaller, for the smaller ones. So they have, they have room there, so you're not going to end up putting people on the, you know, which are, are my concern with the garage sizes, is that when we approve some of these tandem garages or undersized garages, that the reality is people will be parked on streets, and on curbs, and on sidewalks, and blocking bike lanes. And that's not what we're going to see here. I, I like the fact that the, the sidewalk integration on the two adjoining streets, that we have these doors facing these adjoining streets. Again, it's, it's kind of like a mini little development, a fee-simple townhouse, single-family owned houses. It's, 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 it's kind of a unique situation. Again, it's not, I'm, I'm kind of surprised by the amount, the, the folks that, my good friends here, that are in opposition to this, because it kind of, this is, this seems like a smart project, considering what could be developed on this property. I mean, I think they're underdeveloping this property. And you look at the, and you look at the amount of concrete that there's right now with that Borden property versus what's going to come. There's a lot more green space, a lot of opportunity for green space. Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I, I just, we just can't be in a position to say no to everything. And this is one of those things that I'm going to, I'm going to vote in favor of.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilmember Clendenon, would you like to go ahead and make, well, you've made the last motion. Do you want to take it?
I'll do it again.
All right, this is item nine, go ahead.
I move file number REZ 2508, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 5200 South Manhattan Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification CI commercial intensive to PD plan development residential, single-family attached, provided an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Henderson. Councilman Vera, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to second, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Henderson, roll call, vote.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda? Carlson? Hertek?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carries with Carlson abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida 33602.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to new business? Go ahead. Yeah, please, please stay quiet, we're still in the meeting.
Two, I'd like to make a motion to invite the Purchasing Department to join us March of 6, 2025, to celebrate Purchasing Month, and to highlight the incredible work they've been doing.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Yes, sir?
Second is, on February 7, the Jeswood JV hockey team played against Manatee Admirals in the Lightning High School Hockey League Championship Game. Jeswood beat the Admirals by a score of 6 to 2, with their final record of 20 wins, no losses, and one tie. I would like to present the team and the coaches with commendations off-site, on a date to be announced by the school. It will be held in the courtyard between the two buildings, and all council members will be invited.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Thank you. Councilman Vera, do you have any new business, sir?
Yes, sir, really quick, Mr. Chair, thank you. Long story short, I went now and visited with some residents over in North Tampa. And they wanted a, a report, I'm just going to make it a written report. This is just background on some stormwater improvements. This is in the Forest Hills area. So I'm making a motion for a written report on the status of stormwater improvements to Mayberry and Orange Grove, Groove, excuse me, in the North Tampa area, a written report. We can have something back. And I apologize, counsel, I don't have my calendar here, but let's do May 1st. And if they need more time, I'm glad to accommodate it, but just a written report.
May 1st, written report, that's fine. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Vera, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Clendenon, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. You know, it kind of slipped past us. To me, Paul Guzzo is one of the most just locally impactful, hard-hitting journalists, who, his, his work, whether it's on Mount Zion, on cemeteries, I mean, he, he's really moved mountains. He's such a great guy. And so I wanted to present to Paul, I've wanted to give him a commendation for a while, but kind of didn't think it was proper, as he was an active journalist. But since he's left, I want to, if I may, on May 1st, I don't believe there's any conflict there, to invite Mr. Guzzo to come to the City Council for a commendation.
So on May 1st, we have Police Officer of the Month, and then we have a presentation from FDOT. So I think you're. from FDOT, so I think you're fine. All right, we have a motion to present Paul Guzzo with a commendation from Councilman Vera, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it. Thank you, counsel. And thank you for allowing me to be virtual. My son had to go to work, and we only have one car here tonight, so that's the way it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson, do you have anything?
Yes, just like, really, a comment. I just wanted to make it official. Blake High School, Howard W. Blake High School, is winning this month. Isaiah Rogers won the Super Bowl with the Philadelphia Eagles, and Dolce won the Grammy. So this is some great, you know, citizens of Hillsborough County and Tampa, Florida. And I just wanted to say congratulations. At a later date, we're gonna try to celebrate. Definitely Dolce is already in the works, working on celebrating her with a commendation from half the city of Tampa. And Mr. McGregor is working on it for Isaiah Rogers as well. So just want to congratulate them publicly while it's still hot.
Very good. I just would like to wish our beloved Mr. Shelby an early happy birthday Wednesday. Is that correct?
Can I wish our not-beloved one?
Don't laugh at his jokes.
Yeah, no laugh. Councilmember Clendenon?
One, I hope if she comes, that y'all will insist that we do, I do a duet with her. I'll rap with her.
It's gonna be offsite at Blake, and I don't think the kids might boo you. You might get mad by her joke.
I might be down. I'm down.
Well, practice.
Yeah, I'm gonna start on a sadder note. During this meeting, I was notified that a good friend of mine, and a good friend of public education in the state of Florida, State Senator Geraldine Thompson passed away. So everybody keep, her family and her thoughts and prayers was unexpectedly due to complications from surgery. So that was sad. I have two motions from the Planning Commission. Motion number one is a request by the Planning Commission to set a transmittal public hearing for TACPA 2404, and TACPA 2405, and TACPA 2406 on May 22, 2025, at 5:01 p.m., and direct the Legal Department to provide the city clerk with the form of notice for advertising the public hearing.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Go ahead, sir.
I have a second one, a request for the Planning Commission to remove TACPA 2417 and TACPA 2418 from the April 24, 2025, 5:01 p.m. adoption public hearings.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Anything else?
You know, I do want to, I'm not ready to make that motion, but reference this garage. We've got to close this garage thing up. So we're gonna have to create an ordinance.
It's a technical standard.
I'm sorry, technical standard, yeah. So maybe we can work on that, and somebody prod me to do it, or somebody else wants to take control over it and do that. I think we need to close this up, so at least we have the questions asked and answered. There's no vagueness in our intent, so we don't have to deal with this every meeting, it seems like.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I made the following motion on January 30, 2025, that the Mobility Department be requested to provide a monthly in-person report on detailing personnel, third-party maintenance contracts, and equipment paid for by the Stormwater Service Assessment. Further, that said in-person report began on March 6. The motion was carried unanimously with Carlson absent and Clendenon absent. But I need to change the motion to eliminate the recurring monthly request and to change the presentation date to March 27, 2025. I made a bunch of motions at the same time, and I think they got conflated.
Okay. We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
And then I have one more thing. I don't know if CCTV can show, but the city council chambers got a lot brighter this week. We have a beautiful piece of art that was created by the children at Stepping Stones in Sulphur Springs. And it is a group that we have provided some social action and arts funding to. And it is just, it just makes me smile every time I look at it. And we really just needed some nice color. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Sulphur Springs, and thank you to the city art staff who was able to get it together, or, you know, help put this on a wall that really needed some love.
I agree.
And what he didn't see is it says, "Our Home Matters," and it's environmental.
We didn't need to approve.
We didn't have that vote on that.
No, no. It was a donation, so.
I like to ask Councilman Clendenon to talk about his movie acting career that he's taken off on.
Yeah, let's talk about this film.
You know, I think I'm not at liberty to discuss this activity.
Are you a SAG actor?
That's awesome.
No, but I will be in a romance movie.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yes.
Yep.
That's so cool.
I'm one of the editors.
So cool.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. I appreciate you circling back to me. I want to publicly apologize to staff. When I discussed business this morning, I asked about the Army-Navy store, and they did send us the memo while we were on vacation on January 2. So I missed that one. And I just want to apologize publicly. I appreciate you all following up, Ms. Feeley, for sending me that clarification, that a January 2, the day after New Year's, memo was sent.
We have a motion to receive and follow. Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
8:15.
We are adjourned.